We'll start. Today is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, and I call to order our regular session. Victorville City Council, Victorville Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Housing Assets Accessor. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Present.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Close them.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Could I get closed session announcements by our city attorney?
Thank you. We had one case this evening. It was existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. The case name and the case number set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to that item.
Thank you. Do we have the invocation now?
Yes.
Okay. Invitation will be presented by Father Jude of St. Joan of Arc.
Yes.
Hi, Father Jude.
Yeah, I am here to present invocation.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
In God we trust, therefore let us pray together. Dear wise and loving Father, we thank and praise you on this evening and bid of all you are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for our various level of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. In the time of COVID-19, please protect our city officials and our beloved City of Victorville. Merciful God, I pray for all our city officials. Please grant them wisdom to down amid the conflicting interests and issue of our times, essence of the welfare and true needs of our people, a key first for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, a personal peace in their lives, joy in their thoughts. I pray for the assembled citizens who are present today. Please give an assurance of what you would please do and what you cannot do to achieve and working around our beloved city of Victoria. It is in your most blessed name I pray. May God bless us all. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. So at this time, should I continue now?
I'm going to ask the public if they would silence their cellphones, mute their cellphones while until the time for them to speak. Okay. Sorry about that, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. You can really hear a lot of feedback.
Okay, I think we're good.
At this time, we have, if there's an item on this agenda that may be a conflict of interest to any council member or board member, please identify at this time.
I have none.
Is there anything? None?
No. There was none? No conflicts.
Very good. Very good. So we will start with our appeal hearing. We do have one item this evening, and appeal to the City Council concerning the Planning Commission approval of case PLN17-00028, the approval of a site plan and a lot merger to allow for the development of an approximately 975,000 square feet speculative industrial building on a 44.77 acre building site with a mitigated negative declaration on property located within the Southern California Logistics Airport at the southwest corner of Phantom West and Nevada Avenue, Lot 19 APNS 0459-041-17, 2021 and 25. Applicant Sterling Capital Investment Lot 19 LLC, Appellant Better Neighborhoods Inn. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
To deny the appeal as the appellant has not submitted any new environmental concerns that the city has not already previously addressed, thereby affirming the Planning Commission's approval of the project by adopting Resolution Number 20-012, denying.
Set presentation.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is brought to you and presented by our city planner, Scott Webb. And as briefly articulated in the recommendation, this is involving an appeal of a Planning Commission action. It's a project that's approximately 975,000 square feet proposed out at Southern California Logistics Airport. It's actually been through the planning process. It's been an exhaustive process, and the Planning Commission ultimately approved this project to proceed. With that, I'll turn it over to city planner Scott Webb to give some additional particulars of this project before opening it up to the members of the public.
Thank you, Keith. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Keith was mentioning, this project has gone through an exhaustive environmental review. This project was first seen by the Planning Commission in 2018, where comments were received and responded to. It was scheduled for future public hearings where additional comments came in that were responded to. And finally, on March 11th, the Planning Commission approved the project, which was followed by an appeal by Better Neighborhoods. We have an environmental consultant, Blackstone, that has expertise in the hazardous mitigation measures. And they've responded to all of the comments that have been brought up by the appellant. And we've also documented that in the initial, the original initial study that was approved by the Planning Commission. So we're available to answer any questions you have. We also have the environmental consultants available if you have any specifics.
Okay, I will ask each council member. Councilmember Cox, do you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Jones?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes. My initial question first though is, what are the names of the environmental consultants and experts that are available right now on the phone?
Councilmember Gomez, if we might just let us circle back on that. To the members of the public, can you please mute your phones? There's a lot of background noise. We're even hearing dogs barking, and it's actually disrupting our ability to hear the council members. Thank you. I'm sorry, Councilmember Gomez, can you restate your question, please?
Yes. What is the name and the experts that are on the phone ready to respond to any questions that we may have?
Well, certainly from staff, you've got Scott Webb, the city planner, and he was principally responsible in leading this case through the Planning Commission. I'm not sure as far as who's on the public line because we don't have an exact inventory of who's on the line. We do have letters that have actually been submitted on behalf of the developer, Sterling Development. There may be a representative from Sterling on the phone. And I also see some letters here from various union groups actually in support of the city council's denial of this appeal.
Is Blackstone on the phone? That's the environmental consultant. Well, the reason I asked that was because I heard Scott Webb that there's also environmental, or environmental, and I'm presuming it's an expert on the phone major, according to the initial question.
There may be a member from Blackstone on the phone. Can I ask if there's a member from Blackstone on the phone?
Yes, this is Sarah Denton with Blackstone. I'm the geologist and hydrogeologist that offered the response.
Okay. So we do have a professional representing the developer as well on the phone.
Okay. My question is, what's the purpose of the hearing in legal terms and how does it hinder or assist the city in the decision-making process? What were the structures, the buildings, any businesses that were immediately surrounded? I know we have a picture here, but I don't see much. So I just want to verify if there's anything surrounding the area.
Yeah, so Councilmember Gomez, so really, this is a part of the deliberative process. It's part of the due process rights of anybody in the public that has either standing or care or concern about a particular project. So in this particular case, the final step that we control here locally is the appeals process to where if there was dissatisfaction with the Planning Commission's action. In this particular case, you as the city council are the ultimate appeals body. And with that, you have the ability to hear any additional concerns somebody might have to suggest that there may have been an error in the deliberation by the Planning Commission. As far as the site characteristics, I think it's laid out. I think you can probably see it best in starting with the site plan on page 11 of the agenda, which details the actual site layout and shows where along Phantom West, on the south side of Phantom West Drive, the building is to be laid out. It shows what appears to be an expansion area as well to the south and west of the proposed building. Then on page 12, you actually have building elevations that are prepared likely by the architect. And then finally, on page 13, you actually see an aerial photograph depicting the site. And as I see that illustration, it's again showing you the boundaries, which are the roadway system, Nevada to the east, Eagle to the south, George to the west, and Phantom to the north. And effectively, what you've got is a vacant, rough-graded site. It's fairly flat. And to the south, you've got old military-style buildings that, to my understanding, are intended to be demolished as development occurs. To the east, you've got old roadway systems that once used to be residential neighborhoods serving the military when this was an active military base. To the west, you have development, new development. Actually, I think it's a 450,000 square foot building. It was actually recently completed by Sterling, just to the south and the west. And then on the north side, you have the airport facilities.
Thank you for that clarification. The next question is, would you please define, I heard the word speculative industrial building on the 44.77 acres, which is within context about a million square feet or 975,000 to be exact. Has the city reviewed anything, whether it's in writing or oral documentation from the appellant's attorneys aiding in staff's recommendations? And what was the purpose of re-noticing the project and re-advertising the project? Was that because we were trying to cure ourselves from indemnification of any future potential anticipated or any litigation that could come forth?
Well, I'll start with the part that I think I can handle, and then I'll probably turn it over to Scott Webb as he might be able to go into the better detail. But I guess the question relative to whether or not the appellant actually aided in the recommendation, I can tell you that the answer to that is no. There was no role for the appellant to participate in staff's recommendations. Staff's recommendation effectively is neutral when it comes to these projects, and it's making sure that all of the issues that are of concern are adequately addressed. And then Scott, Mr. Webb, can you help out with the rest of that, please?
Yes, Keith. So this project was actually noticed twice. Once in September of 2018. And where it went to, it was subsequently continued two times from that. And then on February 2019, the item was removed from the Planning Commission agenda because the applicant wanted to possibly reconsider the design of the site. So when the applicant realized that they wanted to pursue the same layout again, the project was re-advertised and noticed to all of the concerned parties again. And that is why it was re-advertized, is because it was taken off of the Planning Commission's agenda.
Okay, and then one last question. There's this terminology that I would like to seek legal understanding, and it's the less than significant level. Is there a percentage attached to this phraseology, which is less than significant level? And is this phraseology subjective? Or is there case law that reinterprets or provides interpretation or any type of factual accompaniment with any issues? So has the city in this matter been involved in aiding our staff in making such recommendations?
This is the city attorney. The consultant usually makes those recommendations based on the analysis. But the less than significant is a term frequently used in SEQA and has been embellished by various lawsuits and case law throughout California for years and years and years. It is a standard that is applied to SEQA analysis similar to this.
So the reason I ask, thank you for that clarification. It's rather generic, but it purports a little bit of why I ask the question. Because there are modes of interpretation from our staff providing a neutral stance with an interpretation of less than significant versus having an appellant come in and challenge the word less than significant. So I was wondering if there's a formalized stance that our staff has.
You have 30 seconds.
That would allow us to have a sense of we're in the okay when we both base on the recommendation that staff has provided tonight.
Right. I can tell you, as a city attorney, we are very comfortable with the analysis done by the consultants that the environmental fixer are less than significant. And that's based on comparisons with sort of the standard used in the industry and the case law that essentially defines what qualifies as less than significant. I can assure you, as city attorney, we believe that certainly the analysis by the consultants is very supportable in this case.
Thank you for that clarification. No further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I'm concerned about the appellant, Better Neighborhoods. In regards to the question of the appeal, I can understand why it would be denied. The Appellant Better Neighborhood is not a nonprofit. It is owned by one individual who has been disbarred from the law from Orange County and who has the reputation of doing appeals to stop projects. Since they have not submitted any new environmental concerns that the city has already addressed, I see that the denial has good cause, that we should not consider them as being substantial for they misuse the environmental act. That's all I need to say regarding the appellant.
Mayor Garcia, do you have any questions?
No, I agree with Mayor Protem Ramirez, and I don't have any questions.
Okay, I'm going to open the hearing and call on the appellant first.
Good afternoon. Better Neighborhoods in this appeal.
Hi, you have five minutes.
Excuse me. I'm also here. I am Michael Goldsby. I am the president of Better Neighborhoods.
Okay.
And I am also on the call. And I would like to say something first, okay? First of all, we just heard a personal attack from some lady whose name escaped me. And we've seen this before. It's a diversionary attack tactic that, you know, takes everybody's eyes off the real merits that we legitimately have and bring, and we still feel haven't been addressed. I want to say thank you, Mrs. Mayor, and thank you, council members, okay? And also thank you, staff, Keith and Scott Webb, for being present, for conducting this appeal. Our appeal, by the way, which we paid for, okay? Conducting it under these difficult times that we all live in, COVID, you know, and you all should be applauded for that. You know, I respect that so much about you all. And I can, but having said that, I can tell you this also, all right? This is our appeal. And, you know, we have had interactions with the city clerk through email, through my attorney, okay, about our appeal, okay? But when this got placed on the calendar, the city council's calendar for tonight's agenda, we were not notified by a phone call. We were not notified by an email. We were basically sent a snail mail letter to an office. And we all know, most offices are closed, including our lawyers, all right? Which is remarkable, okay? That that was done in that manner for our own appeal. And so now, we didn't even know this was going to be happening tonight until last night at about 4:00. That's when our attorney, Mr. Sting, found out, okay? And I didn't find out until, you know, later that night. We have had zero time, okay? Zero, Mrs. Mayor and council members, to actually, you know, sift through this staff report and digest any whatever is different and new. But I can tell you this for sure. The history that we've had, okay? On this matter is, this project got presented, all right? And then had comment letters, serious comment letters by serious parties raising serious issues, including Better Neighborhoods and also including the carpenters' union. And, gosh, what happened? Well, we hear what you say happened, they say. We took it off, we withdraw our application, okay? Which happened. And so this has been dormant for a year. And now, all of a sudden, it gets put back on the agenda and put in front of the Planning Commission, all right? And then our lawyer on this project happened to be away for a month and out of the country, and Better Neighborhood sent a letter, you know, to the Planning Commission, basically saying this, all right? We basically said, look, it's been a year, and the only change that we can see after all of the serious environmental issues that were raised by multiple parties is that there's no change whatsoever to the MND. There's no change, there's no additional SEQA analysis. There's no, hey, we mitigated things that people thought were a problem. There was only one brand-new thing, which was a new biological report study, okay? That was all, okay? And then, of course, what did the Planning Commission do? They approved the project anyway. And so what did we do? We appealed it. And so here we are, but we get zero advance notice of when this actual appeal hearing might happen until, I don't know, 10 hours ago, okay? So we are at a complete disadvantage. At the very least, this matter should be continued so that we have some time to actually look at the 100-plus-page new staff report, okay? Which, by the way, we did have some time to look at it, and we did see that there's one new thing with this new letter from Blackstone dated April 3rd, you know, which tries to address, you know, our letter with the planning commission, okay? But the reality is, this is completely of due process violation. It is not living up to what a city should try to, you know, do to, you know, comply with California's environmental laws, all right? And I'm winding it up. If we pay for only five minutes, great. But I'm just telling you, and then our attorney can take it over from here. Please, please, Ms. Mayor and council members, you know, this is where we're at, and we still say this. The MND, the SEQA analysis so far, including that latest letter from Blackstone, they all fail as informational documents. They don't have any adequate SEQA analysis on all the important points that we raised. And we still have a fair argument that the project may have an environmental, adverse environmental impact. So therefore, we say, this must be continued, this, our appeal hearing. But we also say, at the very least, this project, you know, has serious problems, haven't been addressed, and at the very least, the city should prepare an EIR or require that to be prepared. Okay, that's all I have to say. I don't know if I ran out of time.
We didn't limit you to five minutes.
Did I make it? Am I inside five minutes?
Oh, no, you went over.
Okay, well, all right. But I do, I say this with all due respect. I really have a problem with whoever this lady was who wanted to interject her personal attacks about me personally because that has nothing to do with the merits of what we brought up and what everybody else brought up, okay? And my lawyer, Chris, why don't you explain when you received the letter? You can talk from there and.
I think Michael covered most of it. This is Mr. Sting again. I just want to reiterate some of the points he made, which is just that there's lack of notice about this hearing. I, as you're aware, with the coronavirus shutdown, a lot of social distancing going on. I received the letter sometime yesterday, and then I notified Michael regarding the letter. And from that period, we haven't had an ample opportunity to really review the staff report and anything additional. So all we're requesting is that this be continued through a future date and then notice be provided in a proper manner. I've had email communications with the city clerk, which, I mean, since she replied, she has my email address. But during the lockdown, I received a snail mail to my office. I don't think a lot of things were considered when that notice was sent. So again, we think this should be continued. There's serious issues with this project, and we'd like to take a closer look, as should the council members and the mayor. And that's all I have. And one last thing, I think the personal attacks are meritless. They're being made with what I would assume someone Google searched or whatever it may be, but they're false. And we, I respectfully ask on behalf of my client that they not be brought up again because there's no merit there. And in addition, this is an appeal of the project, not a direct attack on my client. And with that, I turn it over to the council members and the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a letter submitted by the applicant, Brian Parno. He would like me to read it into the record. Honorable council members, I am the chief operating officer of Sterling Development, the applicant. I wish to be on record to support this development project and deny the appeal, an appeal which is made by persons and organizations who have no real interest in local region whatsoever. Our company has worked tirelessly for well over 15 years in close cooperation with City of Victorville, its council and administration to prepare for and execute high-quality industrial real estate projects at SCLA through this joint effort. We have. We have made a significant positive impact for the city and the region as a whole. We have always designed and built projects that are vast improvement to what previously existed on the lands when occupied by the former George Air Force Base. This is as much true from an environmental standpoint as it is from a quality or economic impact. Our proposed project meets or exceeds all of the state and regional government requirements. We are eager to continue the overall redevelopment of SCLA with the pro, with this project. Through sensible environmental practices, we intend to facilitate bringing quality jobs to a first-class industrial park a local region envisioned, planned, and approved precisely for this purpose many years ago by the city council of the City of Victorville. Thank you for your support." And then I will ask if there's any comments from the public? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item?
Yes, Valentin Godina.
Okay, Valentin, you have three minutes.
Okay, I would like to, um, support the, the appellant's of the, uh, Better, Better Neighborhood's, um, appeal. I would like to, um, support denying them their appeal, because I did a Google search, um, San Jose Insider newspaper story by Jennifer Watson, confirmed everything, uh, from Mayor Dr. Rita had just stated, and a whole lot more about Mr. Michael Gouldy. So this is not a personal attack, this is someone who did a report on him and has a lot of other very interesting things to say about him, and how he has constantly blocked cities from going forward and moving forward, not only in Victorville, Santana, Orange County, and other cities, seeking some sort of, uh, compensation to allow them to continue. So I think we're gonna have, uh, more interchange with, uh, Better Neighborhoods Incorporated and more, um, problems in the future with them trying to, uh, uh, establish roadblocks. Now, anybody can Google, uh, San Jose Insider and read the story by reporter Jennifer Watson. There was no rebuttal to her story. I do not know if it's true or not, but it is very concerning.
May I say something, please?
Uh, not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, not at this point, we're still at public comment.
Because why? Because I only get five minutes?
No, I, you will have, I'm sorry, you'll have time for rebuttal after public comment. You'll still have some more time.
I only have three minutes, and I don't want to be interrupted.
After his public comment?
No, it was my public comment.
Right.
Right. How you done? My public comment, and you interrupted my public comment.
Sir, I still have public comments, so can you hold, please, until after the public has had their chance to comment, and you'll have your time to rebut? Valentin?
Sure, after all of this?
Val, Valentin, please go ahead.
May I continue?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so, as, as I said, I did some research on Better Neighborhoods, 'cause the neighbor, the name sounded really positive and really interesting, Better Neighborhoods Incorporated. But after what I have found out and read about him, I don't think that what his statement states is what his mission is. So I am very concerned that, uh, we, he will continue, uh, harassing us for personal interest.
Okay.
Because this is what the, uh,
Yep, 30 seconds.
Insider newspaper reporting. This is his, uh, MO. So let's not allow outsiders to stop us from going into the future. Thank you.
And then I-
Okay, do I get a rebuttal?
No, I'm sorry, I still have one more than eighty to read into the record. I do have a letter here from United Brotherhood of Carpenters. "To whom it may concern, my name is Jacob Klepski. I am the lead representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and president of Carpenter's Local 909, which covers San Bernardino County. Local 909 represents over 4,600 members in the San Bernardino County. I write this letter on behalf of those members and their families in support of Lot 19 project, Agenda Item No. 1, SCLA Lot 19. In these unprecedented times, they have affected so many, this project is an opportunity to provide good-paying local jobs with responsible community partners for the residents of Victorville and surrounding areas. This project will also be built by contractors who supply health coverage for not only their workers, but their families as well. This is no longer considered a luxury, it is considered a necessity to the overall health of workers, their families, and the public. A commitment like this should be, should be viewed as going above and beyond. The developers should be commended for this. It will also provide an opportunity for construction workers to work in the community they live instead of having to commute out of town during a time where social movement is so important to be minimized. It is with great pride that I support this project. Does not my, it does my heart good to see a developer take such an interest in choosing a contractor who ensures the health and safety of his workforce is at the top of the priority list. For these reasons, I ask that you too support and approve this project when making the decision to approve. Please consider the commitment this project has made to the overall well-being of the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration." That one, now is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, no, then I will now allow the-
Yes, I do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have, could you please state your name?
Yeah, this is Chef Basil. Uh, I want to commend the speaker before, yes, we definitely, myself and Lisette.
Pardon me, who is this? This is who again?
This is Chef Basil.
Sheriff?
Chef Basil.
This is the sheriff?
Chef Basil.
Chef, okay.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, we definitely, the speaker that, uh, the labor person before us, I totally agree with her, we definitely, definitely support that issue, thank you.
That is good, that is great, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, now, I will, the appellant, now you do have time for a rebuttal.
Okay, it's Michael again talking, so, um, let me just say, um, as far as the carpenters' union goes, um, and also the other unions that had a comment letter, um, we support our brothers in the workforce. We are not ever about, um, stopping a project because, you know, we want to hurt anybody's livelihoods or anything like that. We are only about cities complying with the existing laws and trying to get some changes, um, you know, where they, where they could be made, you know, in a realistic, you know, manner. Um, and, and so I, I wanted to address that last person, um, whose name I can't remember. But, so the other part of my rebuttal is this, this person named Valentin, whose name, whose name is not, um, on the record, and she, she did not say, what? I keep hearing noises. I, so Valentin never, I, we don't, somebody needs to please say into the record what his last name is, but I can tell you this, alright?
This is her.
I understand Valentin supports the project, okay?
Are you addressing me, or are you addressing the council?
I'm s-
Is this Valentin?
Uh,
Yes, it is. Are you addressing me, or are you addressing the council?
Excuse, excuse me.
I'm addressing the council.
Valentin.
I'm in my rebuttal.
Valentin.
Yes.
I'm in my rebuttal.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody take a pause for two seconds. Everybody take a pause for two seconds. I have to ask for respect from all of those on the public line. Valentin, you had your opportunity to speak. Right now, we have to respect the time that's been offered to the appellant to rebut. And to all of those members of the public, please, 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 put your phones on mute, because we're getting a lot of feedback that's distracting to speakers. Thank you.
Yes, I'm being as, I'm being as respectful as he was to me when I was speaking.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Valentin, I, I know I did interrupt you once, but, but I, I'm sorry about that. So, um, I just wanted to say about your comment, uh, to the council and the mayor, that, um, you know, you, you said the word that you want to have more interchange with Better Neighborhoods, because more problems. And let me just say, and you also referenced a story from, you know, Control Insider, Jennifer Watson, okay? Well, first of all, Better Neighborhoods has completely debunked and responded to that story on our website in the news section. Go to www.betterneighborhoods.com, alright? And we have debunked it. It is fake, and it's what's used by developers to, to point to so that they can try to get their projects approved and discredit us, and ignore, and, and make, make, um, good, uh, public officials, alright? Um, go, go away from the merits of what we're bringing up, and, and go off on the personal, actual fake stuff. So that's my one thing. The other thing I just wanted to say to Valentin, uh, about Valentin's comments as a rebuttal, is, sir, I know you're-
Are you addressing me, sir? Are you addressing me or the council? It sounds like you're addressing me.
Okay, well, I am, I'm addressing what you said, because I get to rebut what you said, okay? So the next thing I say-
Address it to the council, not to me then.
Okay, here's what I say. Um, our organization has had multiple threats of physical violence.
That is, I do acknowledge it is.
Okay?
That one?
And we, and we have these-
Not my mail.
We report these to all the appropriate agencies, okay? And when you say you want to have more interchange with, you, I don't even know who you are. When you say you want, I take that as a threat. You, I have a bodyguard, we have, um, documented cases of physical threats to our attorneys, to our staff, to me personally, okay? So, if, if you're-
And no time did I threaten you.
Valentin, you are out of order.
Andre, I believe that, that this meeting is really, uh, out of control, and, uh, we have already, um, bypassed, you know, the item that was needed for discussion. I think we're, we're personal issues here.
Right, Mayor, if I might, though, we should let the appellant continue his rebuttal. He has afforded that as due process before the council takes a decision on this. So I would let him talk, but Mr. Godina is inter, interjecting and interrupting, which is out of order. Mr. Godina's already had his chance. Right now, it is the appellant's opportunity to address the council.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, so, so that, then that would be Valentin Godina, I guess. So I have to, we all have to say who we are, but not him, but now we know. Anyway, um, I don't have anything more to say, that's my rebuttal. We already said it's all on the record, we, we think this is like, you know, last minute. We think it's like shove it through, nobody's looking. We hope they didn't even get the, the snail mail. We're gonna approve the project, you know, and there are serious issues that have never been addressed or mitigated, and that's our final word, I think. So that's my final point on the rebuttal, unless Chris, if you have anything else to add, um, please add it now.
I have nothing to add, I think we've already addressed what we want, the, what we're recommending the city council members to do, which is to provide an opportunity for us to prepare for the, for our appeal. And the notice we have received, uh, uh, so far, is, is not a proper notice. So again, we just ask that you continue, uh, to a future date, and allow everyone to provide more information regarding this project, and that, that's the last thing I have to say. Thank you.
And is there any further rebuttal from the applicant?
Who was that? The city clerk, okay.
Okay, no further hea, now the hearing is closed. Mayor, if you'd like a motion in a second?
Uh, pardon me. Madam clerk, if you have follow-up questions, if we have time remaining from the appellate applicant's comments? Or policy and manual allows for that?
May it be appropriate, the public hearing is closed.
The public hearing is closed, however be appropriate, for council members to ask them additional questions, or they can wait until, if there is a motion, to have a discussion at that point.
That's my suggestion, to wait until after I, I would have the motion in a second, then we can actually have, uh, discussion. Is that correct, Andre?
That would be, that'd be the, the best way to proceed, yes.
Okay, at this time, I am requesting a motion in a second, and that's before we have additional discussion.
Madam Mayor, uh, I will make the motion to uphold the planning commission's decision.
Thank you. I need a second?
I second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments? Um, Councilmember Cox?
Yes. Yes, I, uh, all this other stuff aside, I tried to deal with just the facts of what was before us and determine whether or not the city council, uh, I mean, the planning commission, made the right determination and considered all the factors. It's difficult reading, it's a long-time reading, uh, to get through this, uh, and therefore, um, the appeal, that the city council has to make a determination if the planning commission considered all things adequately, addressed everything, and didn't leave anything unturned, I think that they did a great job. I went back through it several times, and of course, at the appeal hearing, we normally hear from the appellate, where errors have been made, requesting that the council agree with the appellate and overrule the individuals who, uh, who want the project to move ahead. I didn't find that, I didn't find, I found a lot of questions. And in fact, I found so many questions, I went back. I expected to turn the page and say, well, the, the work had come to an end, and they didn't address that, and the media could hit the, they didn't address that. I was looking for information that applies to the site, and there seemed to be contradictory information. However, the contradictory information, in my opinion, there was a consultant who walked the site, who made the determination, and then we have the appellate that said, well, they really didn't do it. Um, since they weren't there, and they didn't accompany the consultant, and the consultant submitted a report. I had no choice but to believe the consultant. It kind of went this way, issue after issue after issue. Um, and I know that we have done, uh, many studies, um, but the sta, the staff is very sensitive to these kinds of issues. Before, we've had people raise the issue about, well, did you do a noise study? This is an airport, for heaven's sakes. Uh, and noise studies have been conducted, we have businesses. But I found all of these issues that, uh, have been raised, certainly didn't rise to a level that we should be looking at. To raise certain issues, for example, I think the council knows this, I've been on the Mojave Desert Equality Management District for seven years. They know how to inspect and grant permits and to keep eyes on any kind of business that may violate any equality, any equality issues or any other issues that they're responsible for. A lot of agencies are doing that. So I'm convinced that staff has gone an extra step and covered all the bases, and I don't think that they have made any errors, and I have no choice. After listening to the public hearing, reading this information, that the planning commission's decision was correct, and they should be upheld.
Councilmember Jones?
I'll answer.
Uh, yes, thank you. So, um, I, I do have questions now, other than just, um, than just comments. Um, with regard to the, the appellant, um, and the total of the process, I should always wish that, um, appellant and applicant still like the process is fair, and there's been, um, integrity throughout, um, the entire process, because that's, we serve everybody, and we, we need to make sure that we're doing right by all of our constituents and potential constituents. So, um, my question is, um, I'm supposed to answer our city attorney. There were some concerns raised about how the appellant received notification- There were some concerns raised about how the appellant received notification of this meeting and whether sufficient time was given to prepare for this. What are your thoughts on that?
This is City Attorney Andre DeBortnowski. I believe in looking at the staff report and getting information from staff that all of the necessary notice requirements under CEQA were complied with. So I believe adequate notice was provided, certainly in compliance with the requirements of law.
Very good. And when I was going through all of the documentation, that's the information that I rely on. I don't do external investigations on my own. I rely on the process being fair and methodical and all the cheese crossed and the i's dotted, as it were. And so I certainly could not share in personal sentiments, share expressed at the beginning of the appeal hearing. I don't think that that was helpful to our appellant in this process. But that said, it does appear to me that we've done what we need to do, and I just wanted to make sure that we've done what we needed to do in terms of noticing to the appellant. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off by saying due process. We know that due process is garnered within the Fourteenth and the Fifth Amendments, which is basically the guaranteed right for a person to have a fair application of the law, so that they're not obviously imprisoned, executed, or their property seized. But with this context is so that the appellant has a fair deliberation of the opinions that he feels are not meritous to continue with a project such as the one we have before us. And this concept is responsible for a lot of the procedures that guarantee us, and in fact, this individual talent, a fair trial, so no matter who you are or what you believe. So I'd like to also make it very specific, now that I've delineated what due process means and how it functions and how we should start thinking about these terms that are very legalistic and embedded within our constitutional rights of Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. I want you to please note that this decision that I'm going to make is not that I disagree with staff's analysis, so please don't confuse the interpretations with my concerned forthcoming that are being uttered. Because notice was provided based on legal processes and despite the COVID-19 public health crisis, I would personally have liked, as a public official, that a good and faithful attempt to have noticed the other party in a manner that not only exceeded reasonableness, but also during the circumstances, would have leveled the playing field. And so my vote in this matter would be to oppose the recommendation that is based on the notification that we provided, which was snail mail, not because of the staff's analysis. I'm willing to entertain a motion at the moment to make this agenda for the next council meeting, and I do understand the advantages of the city and can sympathize with the appellant in the matter notice. However, I don't believe that it would harm to approve the appellant to come back in the next immediate council meeting, and this is my motion. And remember, the council has within its authority to make such amendments to at least appear to be fair before making something of the matter to uphold a commissioner's 5-0 vote, and that's what I'm requesting based on, if this was me and my choose and I'm to integrate democracy, I think the best way to do it is to create the most fair due process, and I think that has a judiciary duty as council members who are elected and listen to all sides of these types of issues. Thank you.
There is a substitute motion. Is there a second? There'd be no second, that motion dies. Mayor Protem Ramirez, do you have any further comments?
Simply that I support the Planning Commission approval of case PLN 17-0028. I know that they have addressed all the concerns of the environment as stated by the appellant, and therefore I feel that all concerns have been met. Therefore, I support the Planning Commission and its approval.
Mayor Garcia?
I am very comfortable with the recommendation from staff, and that's my final.
So I do have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. I'm gonna take a roll call vote. All those in favor? Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Jones?
I'm in favor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Gomez, say that again?
I'm not in favor.
Okay. Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now we move on to consent calendar?
Yes.
The recommendation is that consent calendar items two through five may be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Please, please, ladies and gentlemen, of the city, the mayor and council, we are in a...
I don't want to pour anything, I just have comments on a couple of them.
No, I think you just voted, I think you just voted to approve the project, so I have to tell you which...
Which item, sorry, thank you?
Um, just specifically is the one for consent calendar approval of the last agenda minute.
Uh, yes, but when I...
Number two?
Number two?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So one, I noticed that there was no recordation by the clerk to record the mayor's yes vote, and I was wondering why. I could just presume that the lack of it and the motion carries meant that her yes was embedded within it. However, I wanted to see if someone would provide a legal explanation of the seemingly variation of power processing our minutes from now on. That was the first one. And the second one is, I wanted a little bit more clarification with the Santa Clara City, but I think in closed session it was expressed of what we were doing in Santa Clara versus Kestner, so no longer do any clarification on that one.
Okay. Those were the only two you had?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
So now we need a motion in a second?
I missed one. I have one other one, the question that I have for that one. That one is based on, we have a report, it's a building report. I was wondering what the purpose is and how does the reporting affect the decisions that are made or denied by permits? And who uses this information? Stakeholders, visitors, engineers, developers? I don't understand that process for that reporting.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is City Manager Keith Metzler. To address the question, this is a quarterly report, just to show activity that's occurring in your building department. It's really intended to help give you an update as to what residential, what commercial permits are being pulled, but also on top of it, what types of residential permits are being final, signifying completion, also what types of commercial permits have been completed as well. So largely, it's informational for your purpose. It does kind of serve as a barometer, if you will, because if you flip through the report, there is trending year-over-year data. This is a compilation of data that, some of which actually gets turned over to the county for use in their determination as to when they should be actually treating properties different for assessment purposes. And then likely, members in the real estate community find this information helpful for them as well, as it provides just more current information as to what's occurring in the Victorville community. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion in a second?
I saw a move, Madam Mayor, Jim Cox.
Thank you. I need a, I second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor? Councilmember Cox?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do you know, if I may, for the city clerk, someone has spoken on item two, they've asked, but no, you didn't ask for anything. Did you check the email by Ken?
Is there anything on the email? Oh, hold on, let me check. Oh, there is. Okay, yeah, there is one public comment submitted. Hold on. Romero Rodriguez? Romero? He's not there.
Is there an email already?
No, he just says he wants to speak. Oh. Romero, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you would like to provide public comment on item number two?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
I do not approve of the minutes of April 7th, passing that it was under questionable and special circumstances in the last meeting, where a lot of us were not informed that the meeting was going to take place on, over the phone. Not enough media coverage was placed and calls, and we were not informed for us to stake our opinions on some of the issues that were passed and approved. One of them being the acceptance of the approval of the license plate readers, in which that affects the whole community, in which actually it affects the whole city and surrounding cities, in which license plate readers can actually extort money from people. It has a plus and a minus, pros and cons, but it's something that really affects the city quite greatly. So we should have been more informed and just not have two or three people commenting about it. There's a lot of issues about the automated license plate readers, whether they're legal, constitutional, or not, in which they actually go into our own private lives, in which surveil are traveling around the city. And these things, especially to the company that's selling this, they sell the information. The police department says no, but this company sells the information to federal databases and sheriff much, police departments, federal agencies, as well as the private corporations, which is vigilant solutions, and it's made national news, vigilant solutions, not over here, all across the country. And so I think that this should have been approved in a more formal meeting, where more people were informed of the meeting having this taken place. Like I said, the city can be sued. We just see one more way with the police department can generate more revenue. Right now, I know the sales taxes are down, a lot of people aren't paying their property taxes, et cetera, and the city and the police department need money. But they raised our property taxes, they raised our water, they raised our electricity, they raised the permits and everything. How much more can you squeeze out of the people? So I think it was, it should have been suspended for another date, and with real time, the people would have been able to enact and interact with this approval of the automatic license plate readers. But I feel it was, you know, like I said, I found at the last moment, there's no way of how we can inform the people this is going on. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it.
Add a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those were in favor, the motion passes.
Thank you. So now we move on to written communication?
Yes.
Item number six. I believe you will follow that, yes.
This is the purchase of one Type III Wildland Fire Engine Pumper. To approve the purchase of one 2019 Type III Wildland Fire Engine Pumper with equipment in the amount of $375,470.03, with an additional $15,000 required for radio and tool configuration for a total purchase cost of $390,470.03 from Boise Mobile Equipment, and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute all purchasing documentation. This point, I will ask questions, or ask council members if they have any questions. Councilmember Cox?
No questions.
Councilmember Jones?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes. So it's item three, right?
Six.
Item six, written communication.
Okay, so, yeah, I have a question. So when was the onset of the GSA purchase? That's one question. And what was the rationale of not placing it on a bid since it's piggybacked? And you can see that on 313, so there are nine two questions.
Madam Mayor and members of the council... Sorry.
I didn't hear what the member Gomez said.
So I have three questions, so let me go again. So what was the onset of the GSA purchase? What was the date onset? That's the first one. What was the second one, to not place it on the normal purchasing bid? And the third one is, what are we going to be doing with the approximate 100,000 that's going to be left after the deduction of the cost?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is Keith Metzler, City Manager. To answer the questions the best I can, speaking to questions one and two, the city did rely on a joint purchasing cooperative through the U.S. General Services Agency, the Federal GSA. And the specifics on that are actually in the staff report on 313. What's not in there is the date of that GSA solicitation, and so that's something we can certainly share with the council separately, not believing it's really material to the item before you. We did, in relying on this GSA joint purchasing contract, this effectively is a piggyback purchase, which is provided for and permitted in your Victorville Municipal Code. It's also a process commonly used with capital equipment throughout the city, not just fire-related apparatus. As to the budget, right now, the way this budget worked, this budget line item worked, first of all, it's general funded out of the fire department budget, and the money that's being used for this Wildland Fire Engine Pumper is money that was originally intended to serve as refurb money or refurbishment money for two medic engines that actually just recently went into reserve. This council is aware that over the course of the last 30 days, we had just placed into frontline service, brand-new medic engines at station 312 and 313. And at both of those stations, the then frontline apparatus, the then frontline medic engines basically go into reserve status. And when we had developed this budget, we developed this budget largely from the transition plan almost a couple of years ago now. And that plan identified that we may need to refurbish these two reserve units. It's been determined at this time that the refurbishment money is not necessary because those two units currently are fine to serve in a reserve status. That combined with the fact that medic engine 313, over the course of last year, had some pretty meaningful work done to it already. So that actually freed up the line item in the fire department budget. And recognizing a much broader need for upgrades of not only equipment but apparatus, staff has identified a fairly significant need in addressing our two existing brush engines. We currently have two brush engines in service. They're approximately 25 years old, and they need a lot of help. They are worn out, and they're not the best apparatus going forward for our fire service members. So ideally, we'd like to replace both, but we only have sufficient amount of budget for one. Piggybacking off of the Federal GSA gives us an opportunity right away to upgrade our fleet. And I will tell you, you know, if the council does approve this item tonight, I think the exciting thing that, that we can report is that this would be the fifth major upgrade to our fire apparatus. As you'll recall, we've already purchased and put into service two medic squad units that are helping satisfy and better serve our medic calls. We've also just recently, as I mentioned, put in two medic engines. So this would be the fifth piece of apparatus just in the short time of running your new fire department. This item, I'm sorry, so hopefully that addresses the questions.
Yes, and then my next question, which arose with your synopsis is, what would be sufficient to upgrade the second medic engine, since we're going to have about $100,000? And then the other thing is, our general fund is not piecemealed per account necessarily, but it's theoretically piecemealed when you say the department budget fires department. So how do you create a line item theoretically when the general fund just keeps basically funding a lot of sources without being generic accounts, but theoretically they do end up being, which is what you're stating now?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, so the funding source, the singular funding source, of course, is the general fund. But we do break that general fund down in terms of its expenditures to a department level. And so not just fire participate in that, certainly you've got your sheriff contract, which is your other element to public safety. But another example, which is a department here in the city, would be code enforcement. So, you know, you've got your fund kind of hierarchically at the top of your hierarchy in terms of the accounting concept, and you break down your expenditures based upon departmental budgets. So in this particular case, we work from a fire department budget. And if, if we were to go back to the original document that the council approved, that is our spending plan, it's approximately $250 million. Within that larger document, you have a budget for the fire department that is funded from the general fund. And that budget in itself, on the expense side, has a number of line items to do everything from pay for personnel, to pay for equipment, to pay for capital, such as what this item is.
All right, and then the second one was, remember, how much would it take to upgrade the second medic engine?
Right now, based upon, unless Chief Benson wants to correct me, based upon the advice given to me in the preparation of this staff report for your review, I'm told that there are no further upgrades required at this time for the other medic engine.
Yes, City Manager Metzler, this is right...
My question was assuming that if we were to forecast in the near future the secondary one, because it's obvious that I believe two medic engines would suffice for 130,000 people, and just having one fully blown and the other one missing would not do half as good as having both new medics. So I was just forecasting something in the near future. If you had a figure of how much would it be?
Yeah, let me, let me, the fire chief before you had spoken was going to address my comment really quickly, and I'd like him to do that, just to make sure I'm accurate in what I'm saying to you, and then I can address your next comment, Councilmember Gomez.
Yes. Yes, Madam Mayor and council, just to clarify, that the request before you is for a brush engine, and that is a, what we consider a type III wildland engine. The medic engines that are being referred to are type I engines that are more for structural use. So there are different, different intended purposes for each of the tools. The, if I understand what the question is, is would there be value in putting money into the other, the remaining brush engine that's 25 years old? And the recommendation from the fire department staff is that it would not be a valuable investment in that, because that vehicle has exceeded its lifespan, would require extensive amount of capital investment, and it would still be questionable is, you know, is continued use.
And then adding to that, which I think will help cap, finish the answer to your question, Councilmember Gomez, in the perfect world, and when we started viewing this opportunity, we were originally looking at purchasing two, because in the perfect world, we'd like to replace both brush engines. But considering the price tag for one and the budget that we had available to pursue this opportunity, effectively, at this time, we can only afford one. So the second replacement is something that we'll plan for in future year.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Let me...
So at this time, I request a motion and a second.
Let me check to see if there's any public that wishes to comment on this item.
And I have no question either.
Okay. Is there any public that wishes to speak on this item? There being none? Okay, mayor.
Need a motion and a second?
Madam Mayor, I'm glad to make a motion to make this purchase.
Councilmember Gomez, seconded.
Seven motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments?
Yes, with the understanding that... No, no, we're good, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Okay, so...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, with the understanding that it also makes, gives the necessary authorization to our city manager or designee to execute the purchasing documentation.
That's understood in the motion, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones? Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're on to item seven, that the city council approved the purchase of 57 sets of firefighting personnel protective equipment turnouts from All-Star Fire Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $163,186.44. Questions from council members? Councilmember Cox?
No questions.
Councilmember Jones?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Let me see if there's any comment from the public. Is there, is there any comments from the public on item number seven? No comment. So, Madam Mayor?
I need a motion and a second.
Councilmember Gomez will make the motion as recommended by staff.
Cox will second.
Seconded.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? All those in favor, Councilmember Cox?
Aye.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones? Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item number eight, Bear Valley Road Bridge Over BNSF Railroad Project, that the city council adopt the attached resolution to amend the budget to include additional revenue in the amount of $168,207 from Federal Highway Bridge Program grant, and to appropriate an additional expense of $168,207, and approve a consultant professional services provider agreement with Dawkins Engineering in an amount not to exceed of $107,427 for the Bear Valley Road Bridge Over BNSF Railroad Project. Councilmember questions? Councilmember Cox?
I do have a question. When this came up originally, we talked about the need to have these temporary construction easements, and we paid a lot of money for those. Are we going to have to pay again?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I believe the answer to that question is yes, because I believe those TCEs, temporary construction easements, had a timeframe associated with them. That timeframe is about to expire if it hasn't already expired, and therefore would have to be reactivated. And the significance about getting those reactivated is, we are in a process where we're awaiting approval for highway bridge project money. And for us to be in a position when that approving authority is in a position to award those monies, we have to be in a project-ready status. And the concern, I believe, of staff is that if we don't have the requisite right-of-way, or in this case, the temporary construction easements in place, that could jeopardize our status as project readiness. So with that, I said that with a little, a bit of uncertainty, because I wanted to give our city engineer, Brian Gangler, an opportunity to address you, correct anything that I said improperly, and then also expand on the purpose if it needs to be.
This is Brian Gangler, madam, and members of the city council. I can provide a little bit more information.
When we started this process some time ago, I suggested that we not acquire right-of-way or construction easements or on piecemeal, that we probably could do offers, put them in an escrow and hold them, so that when we're ready to go, you can record all, move ahead. We treated the property owners fair and equitable, we paid the money. We, I was unhappy that having a consultant acquire the right-of-way, I don't see why we couldn't have acquired that. I was also expressed some dismay, and I'm going to do it again, that on the easterly side, at least one time, there was only two properties to acquire, and one of the property owners had agreed to donate it, we, we went, southerly side. So we were on the northerly side, where it's all divided up, and had to end up ending, I think your staff report says how many we acquired. And of course, we had to get it right there and just be ready, be ready, be ready. We paid a lot of money, I don't know how much it was, but I think it should have been on the agenda on how much we paid, because as I recall, it was substantial. And now, because it's expired, we're going to pay again, which does not make any sense to me. Something is wrong with this whole process, I shouldn't say it that way. But, I mean, this, come on. And if we're not ready, if we can't get the federal money and it expires again, well then we go through this again, and we pay the property owner again. I'm not for that, that doesn't make any sense. Yeah, we say, oh, it's going to be a federal grant, as if it's free money, it's not, the taxpayer's paying for it. And it looks like that there could be a better way, a better way to do this than what we have done and what we're about to repeat. It seems like we made a mistake that's very costly to the taxpayer, we're prepared to make the same mistake again, that does not make any sense. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, let me ask city engineer Brian Gangler to address that. And I think the question, I think the basic question is, of course, is there a better way to do what we're intending to do here? And perhaps even addressing the comment as to potentially escrowing the right-of-way preservation, for lack of a better term.
Well, unfortunately, the Federal Highway Administration changed their rules on temporary construction easements several years ago. You might recall that on the Naskewa interchange, we were able to acquire the temporary construction easements and then pay a monthly rental to keep them active. But Federal Highway Administration did not allow that several years ago. Now, temporary construction easements must have a certain term, a certain beginning and ending date. And to be eligible for federal funding, you have to comply with that rule, which is what we did for this project. The terms of the easements were for three years, there were eight temporary construction easements. And, and so the problem is, we got right-of-way certified years ago, and we've continued to be pursuing federal highway bridge program funds, but we have not been successful in getting those funds authorized for the construction phase. And so now, what we're faced with is to basically start over. We'd have to make offers again and pay for temporary construction easements with a term, a certain term again, which in this, this case is, we're planning on four years. So if we don't do that, then right-of-way will not be certified, will not be eligible for any construction funds on the project. And the reason why the bridge is widened on both sides, we did look at the alternative of widening on the south side, only unfortunately, it didn't quite meet the clearance requirements for BNSF Railroad. They have a minimum clearance above the top of the tracks, I believe it's 24 feet. Because of the slope of the bridge, it didn't make the clearance requirement to get the adequate widening. And so then, the only alternative we had to meet the BNSF requirements was to widen the bridge on both sides. So access is needed on the north side as well, in addition to BNSF access, and that's why we have this requirement for eight temporary construction easements. So I personally wish that these rules were the way they were years ago, but we're constrained to comply with the federal rules if we want to get the federal money.
Does anyone recall what we paid for those temporary construction easements in the past?
I, I don't have that in front of me, but I can tell you, what we had budgeted for it was, it looks like $180,000. That was in the budget. I don't know what the actual cost came out to. I might be able to find that.
Yeah, if we can't find that, Brian, perhaps we can follow up separately.
Yeah, I think, I'm looking at a sheet that I have right now, this might be approximate, but I think it's in that order. I think it's approximately 100... I think it's approximately $190,000. Now, a good part of that, it looks like about $29,000 of that is to BNSF. We don't expect to have to pay them any additional amount, because we already have an agreement with them.
Well, if we have an agreement with them, when we sign the agreements with the property owners, are we having the same kind of agreement with them? Understanding that it may be continued, and since we have paid them the amount that they have requested and everyone's agreed it on, that if nothing has changed, that they'd be willing to, as a part of agreement, to consider extending that on behalf of the taxpayers? Probably not.
Well, I, I wish, I wish it were that way, but actually, to go through the certification process with right-of-way, you have to, you have to pay the property owner and close on escrow if you are going to go to construction for the project. There is a, there is a process, an interim process you can follow, but it's, it's only on, how can I say it? We did this on a couple of properties for Niskuale, where they were in the eminent domain process, and it wasn't settled yet. And so they, the compensation wasn't, was in escrow, and it was waiting. But the compensation was being settled. But that, that was only in the case of an eminent domain case, and we don't have any here.
Thank you very much for your answers. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I'm just looking at the backup data on this item, and I don't know if this answers the question or not, or it might, in part. In the second paragraph, it talks about, I guess about three lines down, in February of 2016, there was Amendment Number One for $44,589, and that was to add the right-of-way acquisition services to the contract. And then again, June 2017, Amendment Two, which was an amount of $81,600, and part of that was also to complete right-of-way, not the full of it, but part of it. Is that help, is that, is that part of the answer?
It doesn't help me, because these are temporary construction easements. When we get through with the construction, they go back to the property owner. So he isn't the acquisition.
All right. Well, the points are really cogent. I appreciate hearing that. You know, just maybe some thoughts to go forward on other projects. But other than that, I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, so this is following along the same reasoning with Jim Cox. So first of all, I want to know why Jim Cox knew about the double pay of the acquisition of the right-of-way in the preservation term? And why wasn't this, quote unquote, the caveat within the reporting of this item's discussion? And also, as per Mr. Gangler's correction, for the right-of-way acquisition of the rules being changed years ago, why are we paying what seems to be double and not anticipating meeting the clearance of BNSF measurements for the adequate widening? I presume that all these types of measurements, whether we're using consultants or even our own engineers, would have seen that the slope would cut short, and something cut short could potentially not allow for something that happened today in a cost of double the money or the exuberant amounts of cost, which just doesn't sound very feasible when we're stewards of monies that come from taxpaying dollars.
If I might, sorry for the interruption. I missed, my apologies. I missed, before staff answers the technical questions, what was it that you needed from me, Ms. Gomez? Oh, I knew what?
I just wanted to know, what's, what's your insight? Like, how do you know this and the rest of the council doesn't? Like, do you have a narrow perspective in terms of how this works? Because you were a former manager, and then that really helps the generic perspective? Does that come with experience?
No, this has been on the agenda. This council has discussed this several times in the last two or three years. All the information that I have said here is generically related to past council actions and councils' agendas.
Madam Mayor?
Who's everyone?
No, no, we're here. Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, this is Keith Metzler, City Manager. I think the rest of the question that I can recall was, was, I think, speaking more towards some of the technicals surrounding the appearance of a double payment. And, and kind of blended in there was the BNSF. And from what I heard from the city engineer, the BNSF issue has been, has been resolved. That's, that's an issue no longer. The issue in front of us is the temporary construction easements that expired. And the rules have changed, I think, as the engineer, city engineer articulated. Those were from the Federal Highway Administration, an entity that we have no control or authority over. And because they changed their regulation regarding temporary construction easements and the requirement that the securing of those have a defined term is why we're at this point that we're at currently. As I understand it, based upon his articulation, the, the rule was different on previous projects, and that's why it feels different in this particular case.
So now, I have a couple of questions, and while I'm just going to pull them together. Why is this amendment to the budget required tonight, maybe not post, or maybe not pre, since we've had these agenda items discussion before? And why are we conducting a resolution instead of, for this amendment, instead of probably like an MOU? We could have chosen an agreement, a contract, any other legal means of providing this request, but we chose to do a resolution? And what is the additional revenue required specifically of the $168,000? And is it coming from the general fund? Or is it strictly an adoption for the grant funding from the grant program? How does the city put monies into this? Because all this, to me, sounds like it's, we have to do something in order to get funding monies to help, and my term is probably in still use, to subsidize a lot of the program's projects. And I also wanted to know if this is a reoccurring phase, because we are using the consultant Doken? And do we have any other partnerships? And I'm asking this because we already had the consultant. So if we're going through phases and we're reappropriating another $107,000, what is it that's happening? Phases, procedures? What, please contextualize from my understanding. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, I think to address the money side of it, the money first is being sourced from a grant. The $168,207 figure is coming from, I believe it's Federal Highway Bridge Grant. And that is the, effectively, the revenue source, if you want to call it that, to pay for the expense. And right now, the expense that we're dealing with is $107,427. That's all outlined in the fiscal impact. It does leave effectively a surplus of grant money to be spent, and we chose to keep that available on the revenue side and on the expense side, so that to the extent you do have additional expenses, maybe unrelated to this particular contract, but related to the project, you have the flexibility to take on some additional work. I guess answering the question, MOU, resolution, I'm not sure which others were in there. But bottom line, these are the most appropriate forms of documents to recognize this transaction. The resolution serves as something that this council is resolving by its action, which, which you see in the attached. And then finally, the professional services agreement. That's the actual contract. It's a stronger contract than an MOU. An MOU is probably not the appropriate document in this case to define everything, including not just the scope of work, but things like indemnity and payments, stuff that you typically wouldn't find in an MOU. And then finally, I guess as to the comment, you know, I think my understanding of the comment was something to the effect that could this occur again? I suspect it's possible to incur additional costs to continue the securing of the, the, securing of the grant. It's possible that it could occur again, and it's likely that we would pursue additional highway bridge grant funding for that. To give you a perspective, and maybe this helps, the smaller amount that we're dealing with today, $107,000, the total project cost is estimated currently at about $8.3 million, of which the highway, FHWA is expected to fund about $5.1 million of that. CTA, our Transportation Authority, has already agreed to put in 1.6, and we'd be required a 1.6 match ourselves. So it's fairly important to do everything we can to secure these right-of-ways, because of course, if, if we do, we'll maintain project readiness, and we'll have an ability to leverage our funding source with much larger funding sources.
And Mr. Metzler, if I might add, Andrej Dibotnowski, City Attorney. The reason for the resolution is the fact that this is an amendment to the budget. Since the original budget is adopted by resolution, it's appropriate that any amendments thereto also be done by resolution.
Thank you for the question.
Mayor Protem Ramirez, do you have any questions? Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Okay. Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Is there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Item number eight? There's no public comment.
Thank you. At this time, I request a motion in a second on item eight. Anyone? I need a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council, I'm sorry, this is Deborah Jones. Do I have the floor?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. So I move that the City Council take action in accordance with the recommendations set out on the agenda.
Second?
Seconded.
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. Agenda item nine. That the City Council Grant The Property As Described In The Attached Grant D To The State Of California Department Of Transportation, The Right-of-Way Of Caltrans At I-15 La Mesa Road In Niskuale Interchange, East Side Of I-15. Questions from councilmembers. Councilmember Cox?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, this question is more linguistically inclined, so please bear with me. It's short, but it's just so you understand the context of my question. So the terms granted in this item are being used as verbs and not as monetary figures. I do perceive some as descriptors. We use a lot of wording that is grant. Based on my reading of this, I think there's multiple uses being done. And so I want clarification of that.
Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, yes, the word grant in itself has a number of meanings. There is certainly a financial attachment to it, but in this particular case, it's, it's used as an act or an action, or maybe even as a verb, to where in this particular case, we're actually using another word than grant, we're actually giving property that we currently own to Caltrans. In this particular case, the property in question is property that's currently underlying the north and southbound on and off ramps. I'm sorry. The northbound off ramp and the northbound on ramp along the east side of the I-15 at the Niskuale Interchange. That's effectively where the right, the property is that's currently owned by the city. And, and to perfect the whole ownership by Caltrans for property that is actually highway, we actually are required to give them the property. The technical term in this particular type of transaction is granting them. So that's why they use the term grant of right-of-way in this particular case.
Thank you for the clarification. No further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on item nine? There's no public comment on that item?
At this time, I need a motion in a second on item number nine.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that the council grant the property that's described in the grant D attached, the agenda, to the State Of California Department Of Transportation.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further comments? Take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia?
Yeah.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 10 is La Mesa-Niskuale Interchange 404 Permit Compliance Mitigation Site Coordination. That the City Council Approve Amendment Number One To The Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreement With WSP USA Incorporated To Increase The Compensation By An Amount Not To Exceed Of $30,330 For The La Mesa-Niskuale Interchange Permit Compliance And Mitigation Site Coordination. Last questions of councilmembers. Councilmember Cox?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Madam, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes. So for this time, why was the increase of $30,330 for the interchange needed? And where does the compensation go? And I'm thinking administrative costs, infrastructure, maintenance and operation. And I ask these questions because during bidding processes, these are some of the outlays that we do focus on when we're measuring the metrics of how our monies are being stewarded between, you know, for example, merchant or a vendor. So please understand that I have a rhyme and reason for asking such questions.
Madam Mayor and Members of the Council, this is Keith Metzler again. The additional $30,000 is necessary to perform additional professional services work. A consultant is being used in this case to do additional scoping work, so that we can get the permit approved. This is a precursor to actually forcing the property into conservation and actually having it managed and maintained. So there's a few steps involved in this. Brian Gangler is the city engineer, authored this item, and can speak better as to the, what's in the scoping triggering the additional money.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This is Brian Gangler. This has been an ongoing effort with the La Mesa-Niskuale Interchange to permanently preserve property.
preserve property that had to be set aside to comply with environmental permits, including the 404 permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And we've had to utilize assistance from our consultants, who's been involved with this process the whole time, WSP. We're getting pretty close to getting final approval from the three resource agencies, the Army Corps of Engineers, California Fish and Wildlife, and also the Mahonton Regional Quality Control Board. And basically to get us to the finish line, there's additional work to be done to meet all the resource agencies' requirements. There are reporting requirements, and there's the final environmental report that has to be done on the property. And so this amendment to the consultant contract basically allow us to complete this environmental permit compliance, and we could move to the last step, which would be to enter into an agreement with Rivers and Lands Conservancy so that they would be the third party that would permanently maintain the mitigation site, the land that we're setting aside.
Thank you for the clarification, no further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on item 10? There are no speakers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second for item 10.
I wish to motion the recommendation for City Council to approve the First Amendment to the Consultant Provider Services Agreement to increase the compensation by the amount not to exceed $30,330 for La Mesa-Nesqually Interchange Permit Compliance and Mitigation Site Coordination.
Thank you. Now I need a second.
I second it.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments? I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Jones? Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia? I do believe Councilmember Cox had some technical difficulties, so he is not on the line at this moment. Madam Mayor, would you like to wait till he connects again to see his vote? Or would you like to? Or do you want to move on to the next?
Can we wait just a second and see if he comes back up?
Okay, yes, I do believe we have them putting him through right now.
You see back?
They're dialing in right now.
Oh, okay. Let's give him a time to get --
Okay, thank you. I'll just be just a moment. Councilmember Cox, I was just taking the roll call vote for item number 10. Is your vote yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Item number 10. Motion carries unanimously, sorry about that.
Okay, all right.
Now we're on item number 11, the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project, that the City Council approve an agreement with Wild Desert EM Holdings LLC in an amount not to exceed of $110,994 for the Mojave Ground Squirrel Conservation Credits to be used for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Projects. Is there any questions from council members? Councilmember Cox?
Um, yes.
Okay.
This is for the extension. I thought environmental studies had been done.
We're on item 11.
For the Green Tree Extension Project. I thought the environmental had been done.
Correct, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Yes, the biology, the environmental has already been done. As part of the environmental process, there is an assessment of all kinds of issues, and in this particular case, there was an assessment of biology, particularly there was identified habitat connected with the extension project. So as a precursor before actually being able to break ground and start construction, to the extent there are biological resources identified and mitigation attached to that, you have to undertake all of that before construction occurs. So this is furthering the need to preserve replacement habitat in a different location since Mojave Ground Squirrel habitat has been identified, connected to this project, and requiring replacement before construction occurs. So this is precursor to construction, and this document, this agreement actually allows us to work towards preserving property for the Mojave Ground Squirrel north of Victorville.
So I'm assuming then that the environmental assessment was done, and they detected that there may or could be possible that a ground squirrel was there, and so this is the mitigation measure?
That's correct.
And by the way, and the last time that we had one of these, and we discussed, I don't know why we don't discuss this publicly, I think the public has the right to know, that you can't place Mojave Ground Squirrels from one area into another because it's a different herd, and it may destroy them. And so they are destroyed, they're not transferred, and they're transferred into an area that doesn't have an environmental study that shows they're actually there. And the last time we went through this discussion, and I begged somebody, "Please send me a picture of a Mojave Ground Squirrel," a consultant sent me a picture of a chipmunk. So early studies on Mojave Ground Squirrel, if you go back and look at the early history when they discovered this brand-new species, the last one was, I think it was 1952, six miles northwest of Adelanto. And the argument is that they have to have an autopsy to determine if it's really a Mojave Ground Squirrel, and it's a, I'm really, I don't want anybody to kill off a species that may be important. I've never seen any evidence that they actually exist, and we talk about scams and people jumping on the bad wagon to extort money. Is there any way that we can actually hire a consultant, capture one of these, since they have to kill them anyway, and show the world that they really exist? Because I seriously doubt it. All I have.
Councilmember Jones?
I have to collect myself here. So, yeah, I know, I know, and the thought of it too, of putting out some kind of a beachword sign to them, "Go here instead of where you are," is interesting to me as well. Anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, so my question is, what are the squirrel conservation credits? And why do we need to give $110,000 approximately for the LLC?
As to the conservation credits, I'm gonna let City Engineer Brian Gangler address that, but the compensation actually goes to a company that's responsible for actually holding the property, owning the property, and recording the conservation easement over the property. And typically, the purpose of that is to ensure that in perpetuity, this subject property can't be used for any other purpose but to preserve the Mojave Ground Squirrel habitat. But as to the credits, Mr. Gangler, can you address that, please?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, this is Brian Gangler. One of the requirements of the Green Tree Extension Project was an environmental permit with California Fish and Wildlife. It's called the 2081 Permit, and it's an incidental take permit so that all the area for the Green Tree Extension Project that will be cleared and graded is, according to the permit, going to remove habitat for the Mojave Ground Squirrel. So one of the permit requirements is that we actually have to preserve equivalent habitat in some mitigation bank that they've approved, the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And so that's why we are recommending approval of this agreement with Wild Desert EM Holdings, because they have an approved conservation bank, and they will set aside this equivalent amount of land, about 14 acres. And so the cost to do that is $110 plus. And so basically, that would meet our requirement for the 2081 Permit. And so it is an environmental permit requirement, and to actually start construction on the Green Tree Extension Project, we would need to approve this agreement, make that payment.
Thank you for the clarification, no further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on item number 11? No public comment.
At this time, I need a motion and a second for item 11.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation that the City Council approve the agreement with Wild Desert EM Holdings LLC in the amount not to exceed $110,994 for the Mojave Ground Squirrel Conservation Credits to be used for the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project.
I second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments? All those in favor, take a --
I have a comment.
Oh, yes, Mr. Cox?
I had a comment?
Yes.
Did I understand that the people we're paying are also the same people who own the land, and also the same people that's gonna maintain it? Was that correct?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Could you repeat that, Brian?
That is my understanding that this, I don't know, well, okay, let me clarify my statement. So this agreement with this entity that is Wild Desert EM Holdings is to set aside approximately 14 acres of habitat. I do know that they are in control of the mitigation bank, but as far as if they have to acquire additional property, I'm not real clear on that. Andre and I were both involved in the agreement, so I'm not exactly sure how that transaction works. But I know that the mitigation bank is in place. I'm not exactly sure what transaction takes place on there as far as who the owner of the property is that's set aside.
And that's probably a nonprofit corporation?
They're a, this is Andre Dibotnasky, they're a California Limited Liability Company, and they have been approved by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to basically establish a bank of territory that they control and basically provide credits to entities such as the City of Victorville in this case, to basically address the habitat, the loss of habitat. And they then are responsible for providing, through a credit system, the replacement habitat.
Even though none of the so-called Mojave Ground Squirrels will be relocated there?
Correct.
Because of scam. All right, I don't have any further comments or questions.
Okay, I'll take, I have a motion made by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. All those in favor? Councilmember Cox? Councilmember Gomez? Councilmember Jones? Mayor Protem Ramirez? Mayor Garcia? Motion carries with Councilmember Cox and Councilmember Jones voting no. Item number 12 is the Green Tree Extension Sewer Truck Pipeline, that the City Council adopt the attached Resolution Number 20-013 to amend the budget, including appropriating additional funds from the sewer fund in the amount of $985,377, and to award a construction contract to James McMinn Incorporated in the amount of $3,529,79 for the Green Tree Extension Sewer Trunk Pipeline Project. Councilmember questions? Councilmember Cox, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Jones?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
So this one, we're on 12.
Correct.
A question, and by the way, notice of the council and then for the public, these questions were submitted to Keith and to the City Clerk to make as part of the addendum for any archival for today's date. So you're free and welcome to retrieve those questions accordingly as you choose to do. So my question is, is this a second amendment to the budget since when? I've been noticing a couple of things in terms of modifications or adjustments or appropriations of money, and so that question stems from there. Also, are we providing council with a cash flow for every item that potentially gets money withdrawn from so that we can have a scale of how we are with the cash flow through the amendment process, where the amounts are coming from in terms of which account? And also, if you would be able to tell me a little bit more about this, I would consider the dual decision to recommend to the council, the amendment to the budget and the appropriations of additional funds, so I put quote-unquote, is what I'm quoting there, and what it means to the contract and to the affected budget and the accounts, and how are they affected? So really, the sum of this question is, as council members, not only are we stewards of the money, but at times, we're not following the step-by-step process because we're not the CFO, the CEO, or the staff members working directly in correlation with the items. As a public, we end up getting the information sent each ours beforehand, and so I want to take a steady note as how our flows of money are actually being integrated or not integrated when we make these decisions, because I don't believe as financial stewards of our home, we do these type of mechanisms at a city level. I think in our home, we have more of a delineated checker and ledger of where our money goes, but for the city, it's more of a very generic yes, no, this is how much we're spending. So I want, those questions are relevant to, how can we have a more precise actual of these appropriations? Because there's so many accounts and so much money being withdrawn consistently.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this is Keith Metzler. I believe the appropriations are all outlined fairly clearly in the Fiscal Impact Section on page 479 of the agreement. And I think in there, there's a brief description in one of the cases, because it does identify that this award of contract is being funded by multiple funds, including both the sewer fund, which is Fund 425, and then the water fund, which is 410. And in one of the cases, one of the expense items, expense line items under the fund, because it had other projects charged against that account, is the reason for the additional appropriation in the particular case of the sewer fund. But with that, the author of this item is the city engineer, Brian Gangler. Perhaps he can elaborate a little bit more as to the nature for the additional appropriations.
This is Brian Gangler, City Engineer. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the reason that an additional appropriation is necessary for this particular sewer project is because at the beginning of the year, the fiscal year, we had included in the budget certain --
certain amounts for other sewer projects. Those projects, two of them are... One of them is almost completed. It's a sewer structural rehab project. That required more funds at the time of the award than was originally budgeted. And there's another project that we, the city council awarded for rehabilitating sewer manholes. And that project also required more funds than were in the original budget. And so, for that reason, we need additional funds appropriated for this project to fully fund it. And it's simply because the expenses in the other two projects were higher than originally planned when the budget was approved last June.
Okay, and so, I appreciate that clarification. So, this question is really pertinent, and I should have made that clear. It's really pertinent to all the items that we actually come across, so much money and so much appropriations. And I think this was the perfect time that I needed to initiate sometimes the sudden upset behavior that we can get when we don't know how our finances are doing and we're just relying sometimes on probably blindly on figures that we're not seeing. So, an explanation not only goes a long way, but also the track of having how these monies are being expended throughout the year, like a tally sheet would really have merited work for those that are following the financial budget. So, I appreciate that clarification. It's always marginary, but this seemed to be the perfect way to ask all of it. I appreciate your response. No further questions?
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Is there any members from the public that wish to comment on item number 12? No comments, Madam Mayor.
At this time, I need a motion and a second for item number 12. Anyone?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve as recommended by staff.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments?
Yes, I do. My comment is, does the city have a running tab available for the council to look at at how the budget is being affected when appropriations and adjustments to the budget is being done? I would like for the council to have during each meeting, the running tallies on how the budget is being affected so that we can see the appropriations and the modifications of the budget. I know the city keeps a ledger, but I was looking at something that we can rely on.
I'm sorry to interrupt, this is Deborah Jones. I was disconnected, so I'm back on. Are we still on 12?
Yes.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Any further comments? I have a motion by Councilmember Gomez, seconded by Councilmember Cox. All those in favor? Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
It's aye, presuming it to move the recommendation.
Correct. Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Aye.
And Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number 13 is the Green Tree Sewer Trunk Pipeline Project Biological Monitoring, that the City Council approve a consultant professional services provider agreement with Ironwood Consulting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed of $207,285 for biological monitoring of the Green Tree Sewer Trunk Pipeline Project. Questions of council members. Councilmember Cox?
I do. This is a biologist that's going to do surveys in the same area that we've had other surveys, and we're going to have additional surveys. I'd like for staff to try to explain, how many biologists do we need to find this ground squirrel?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, this item is specific to this project and the project limit to which the construction activity is to occur. I don't know exactly how many biologists it takes to find a Mojave ground squirrel, but at the very least, because there's known habitat in the area, habitat for which it's believed a ground squirrel could reside and flourish, for lack of better terms, the biologist is effectively there to make sure education is provided on site to all those that'll be working, to know what this Mojave ground squirrel is, how to only work within the identified boundaries, and then likely what to do in the event they see a Mojave ground squirrel. City engineer Brian Gangler has much more experience in these matters than I do, so I'll allow him to go ahead and embellish. Maybe he knows how many biologists it takes.
This is Brian Gangler, madam mayor, members of the city council. Typically, there will only be one biologist out there on an as-needed basis. And we feel like this contract amount is on the high end of what we would need, so we are going to control the actual hours spent in coordination with when the contractor's actually clearing the site or grading. After the clearing and grading is done, the biologist doesn't need to be there. But they, in their proposal, they listed several biologists that would be qualified, but there would only be one person on the site at a time. And they do need to give some instructions to the construction crews before they start the work. That's one of the permit requirements. And it's just one of these requirements that we have to comply with to meet the permit with fish and wildlife. There's surely no way we can get around the permit requirement if we're going to grade the property. And just for your information, this grading is going to be within the Green Tree Extension alignment, so much of the sewer project will disturb much of the property that is within the Green Tree Extension. And so, when that project starts, it will be grading additional land, but most of the land on the west side of the railroad tracks between Hisbury Road and the BNSF Railroad, most of it will be disturbed because of the sewer project, not all of it. But so, we'll need some additional monitoring when the big Green Tree Extension Project starts in addition to this. So, I'm just letting you know that that also is a requirement for that project.
I thank you for your explanation. I know, okay, I will send a memorandum to the city manager because I believe there should be a follow-up report, because I have this sinking feeling we're going to be buying another 15, 16 acres for another phantom animal from the same company. I think this, I think we need to find out once and for all, if they exist, what happens to them, should be catalogued, pictures should be taken, the public should be informed, who's getting the money, where does the money go, what did they do with the animals, what do they look like? I'm really sincere, I've been trying for years to get a picture of one of these or see them. We had a past project where they supposedly trapped three of them, but they couldn't tell us what they did with them or where they went. I'm really concerned about this. So, yeah, they could exist, they could survive there, probably so could an antelope, but you know, what the heck? I want more information. I don't think to pay these people or any consultant this kind of money to monitor it, and then we go ahead with the project, spend millions for the project, and nobody ever find out what really happened. I think we have to make a commitment to work with the individuals, have a staff person there, have kind of consulting service, and have them to reveal. This money doesn't come from the federal government, it comes from us, that's where they get the money. We're spending huge amounts of money, and the public ought to have some assurance from our staff, how that money's being expended, what it went for, what it went to, and what the results were. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, if I'm right, this is Keith Metzler. Just a clarifying question, because there was one in there that I believe needs to be addressed, and it was the comment raising concern over whether or not additional property may need to be acquired. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought in the preceding item, item number 11, that that item accommodated the replacement habitat, not just for the Green Tree Extension, but for this project as well. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. That would be a one-time payment, so that assumes that you're taking the entire 14 acres, so you don't have to make another payment after that. That meets permit requirement.
So, we've made the assumption they're going to find them, whether they do or not, we're going to buy the land, whether we need it or not?
Well, the permit, the wildlife permit is what's called an incidental take, so it just assumes you take the squirrels. You just assume presence. And so, because you're assuming presence, you're assuming the take, and you effectively have to buy replacement. That's the triggering mechanism. Those assumptions is the triggering mechanisms to find and buy and preserve replacement habitat in another location.
Okay, well, you answered the question. So, no matter what is there or not there, whether they exist or not, we're going to pay.
That's why they call it incidental take, is probably the better description we could have given to that.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Well, you know, it's a difficult situation because you're really kind of held hostage. You can't move forward with a project unless you do what you got to do on things like this, and you end up paying out a lot of money. You don't know, you don't know if you have the animals there or not that need to be cared for, you know? You just got to do what you got to do, I guess. That's all I got to say.
Councilmember Gomez?
No questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No, we have to do what we have to do, so no questions.
Let me see if there's any from the public. Is there any public comment on item number 13? No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we need a motion and a second for item 13. Or there's no motion?
Yeah, there's...
Oh.
You also have the ability, Mayor, to make the motion yourself if you so desire.
I will make the motion to approve the recommendation from staff. I second it.
There's a motion made by Mayor Garcia, seconded by Mayor Protem Ramirez. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Yes, boy, because we need it, but I feel like I'm being extorted.
Okay. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox? Councilmember Gomez?
I had a comment as well, after hearing Mr. Cox. So, what would happen if the motion failed? No project?
It would jeopardize the project, absolutely. If you don't comply, you're not likely able to start construction.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Well, it is what it is, so aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number 14 is Green Tree Exterior Sewer Trunk Pipeline Project Materials Testing, that the City Council approve a consultant professional services provider agreement with Merrill Engineering Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed of $108,770 for material testing on the Green Tree Sewer Trunk Pipeline Project. Questions of council members. Councilmember Cox?
I should do this time.
Councilmember Jones?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, for two consecutive items in one not lingering, but in the same agenda, we hear about the Green Tree Extension Project. So, whoever's in charge would please contextualize the importance of these items and why they're bifurcated and piecemeal rather than coming together? What is legal processing of doing that? And if there is no relation, would you clarify for me?
This is Andre DeBornowski, city attorney. I believe the answer to that is the fact that these are all separate contracts with different entities. They are somewhat related in that they're all dealing with the same project. However, they're different budgetary amounts, and they are different contractors with respect to each of them. They're slightly different in scope. And for example, one deals with the Mojave ground squirrel, the other one deals with actually material testing, so they're quite different in terms of the different types of contracts and the different consultants that are providing the services. That's why they're set separately, and obviously have different funding sources and different funding amounts.
Thank you for the clarification. No further questions?
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Is there anyone from the public that wished to comment on item number 14? No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Motion and a second, please.
It's Jim Cox, I'll make the motion to apply with recommendation to staff.
Seconded by Gomez.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Gomez. Any further comments? Take a roll call vote, Councilmember Cox?
Wait, I understood, there's a question, Ms. Gomez?
Oh, I...
Was that a you?
Yes.
My vote, yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yeah, I have a comment to the...
Oh, you do, okay, sorry.
I'm in for your one vote.
She's taking vote now, and then you can have your comment after that.
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
And Mayor Garcia? Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Gomez, go ahead, she has a comment.
Yeah, so, in looking at some of the comments that council members said, and some of the, in particular with the Mojave ground squirrel, one of my questions was, if we did not majority vote, what would occur and the response would, you know, if we wouldn't be able to go through? But now, my question is, just because the majority of the council doesn't agree with something, and it goes into a government document allowing for basically the destruction of a project, isn't there a way that stakeholders can place an injunction through a lawsuit and bring this and basically hold the cities speak to the fire, forcing the personal opinions of council members who would have wanted such a project?
This is Andre DeBornowski. That's unlikely. These are permit requirements that we have to comply with, with this project, to the extent that the council decided not to proceed with it. I'm not sure any members of the public would have the ability to force the councils to vote in a different direction.
So, in other words, an injunction would fail, it wouldn't even be a due process way to change the judgment of the interpretation of the vote for a council in a court to force something to come about it, right?
I don't think any judge would ever overturn a majority decision by the council as long as it was consistent and adopted pursuant to law.
Thank you. No further questions.
Item number 15, ratification of emergency repairs, that the city council confirmed the declaration of emergency repairs at Amethyst Road, La Mesa Road, and authorize emergency repair expenses estimated at $150,000, and approve amendment number one to the service provider agreement with DDH Apple Valley Construction in amount not to exceed $150,000. Councilmember questions? Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
When this matter came up originally, because La Mesa, westerly of the freeway, began to cave in, we were told that the corrugated pipe, which is kind of a washboard effect, that the sand had a, an effect of just grinding through that, and we, as a result, it washed out from the bottom, washing away the sand and soil, and as a result, the road started falling in. We then had, I think, one or two, at least one, repair, and then we went to a contract, we had major repairs, replacement, and we did a major replacement or repair, or, I don't know if it's a complete payment or not, all the way to Amethyst. And then we also had major work on Amethyst. I asked the question at the top, had a camera been used to determine if there was further repair that needed to be conducted, and was there further failure in the pipe, and was assured everything's taken care of? Well, it's not. So, what is the likelihood, because I'm sure that that drainage pipe doesn't stop at that intersection, where does the drainage come from? Is it corrugated pipe in the street upward from that location, and has that camera been used run through there? Are we likely to face further failures and further emergency repairs?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is Keith Metzler. I'm going to turn it over to City Engineer Brian Gangler because he knows the greater specifics of that pipe. I can tell you as much that this is perhaps 30-year-old pipe, and it largely extended east, it extends, traverses easterly, westerly from Amethyst to I-15, and I, I'm fairly sure I can recall two times, but not along that entire stretch between I-15 and Amethyst were the repairs and the replacements made. They were effectively in locations where we had previous sinkholes or identified previous issues. So, with that, I believe this section is a part of the larger remnant that wasn't attended to based upon previous issues. But Brian Gangler is the one most knowledgeable, and he can also talk through, you know, what camera work is being done, and he also can give you an update as to where we stand today with this project because it still is ongoing, and the staff report did allude to possibly bringing back additional expenditures if they exceed the identified $150,000. As it currently stands, it looks like we may exceed that. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Gangler, City Engineer, with the better details.
This is Brian Gangler, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going off my memory, but as I recall, I believe it was the winter rains of 2009, 2010, when we had massive failures of the existing storm drain in La Mesa Road. There was an existing metal spiral rib storm drain that had been installed. Now, it would have been about 30 years ago when it was first installed, I believe. And so, we had to have two emergency contracts, and we replaced that storm drain pipe with reinforced concrete pipe, and the replacement went from the Orangeline Wash to Pacoima Road. So, all that was replaced, in about the 2010 timeframe. And then, there is, the old storm drain continues to the west from Pacoima Road to Amethyst Road. It ends actually just on the west side of the Amethyst intersection. And so, the recent problem we had was in La Mesa Road, just on the east side of that intersection. And so, the current emergency project is to replace the old metal storm drain pipe with new reinforced concrete pipe. And to answer Mr. Cox's question, there still is about a half mile of old metal storm drain pipe between Pacoima and Amethyst Road. And a camera was run down that way back when, I think in the 2010 timeframe, and it appeared to be in okay condition. The, one of the problems we have is that because there can be a little bit of silt in the bottom of the pipe, you can't always get a clear view of the bottom of the pipe. And that, that tends to be the place where it corrodes, and we have the problems. So, what we're planning on doing is we want to have another project to replace the remainder of that half mile of old storm drain pipe. And so, we have been working on that recently. I don't have any details on it. I don't have the cost or the timing, but it's something that we're looking at, and we feel like we'll have to replace that as well. The current project that's underway is, they have replaced the storm drain pipe across La Mesa, they got more than halfway across Amethyst Road, and we're hoping that they may finish up sometime next week. We've been telling up the cost. Right now, they're getting close to $150,000. We think that we may surpass $150,000 by tomorrow, and it is possible that the total project could be over $200,000. And so, we're gonna have to come back to city council to ratify the final cost. But that's, that's kind of an update on the storm drain in La Mesa Road.
Hey, Jim?
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, what's the average life of these storm drains? I mean, this one is 30 years old.
Yeah, that's a very good question. Well, unfortunately for these spiral rib pipes, metal pipes, if they are subject to standing water or corrosion, they can wear out in 30 years. That's why the city, as our standard, we require reinforced concrete pipe. There have been reinforced concrete pipes that have been in the ground for 100 years. They've been using it that long, and it's very durable. And so, that's why in our standard specifications, we require that kind of pipe. So, we would never want to put in metal pipe into our streets because eventually it's gonna wear out.
Okay, and we're taking a look at where else we might have issues with this?
Yes, we still have the old metal pipe between Amethyst and Pacoima, and at some point, we're gonna have to replace that.
Okay, and are we, are we taking a proactive look at that so that we're not, we don't find ourselves in another emergency situation? I'm presuming that once you find yourself in an emergency situation, the cost of repairs goes up?
Yes, that tends to be the case because you don't have the opportunity of going through a competitive bid process, and we are looking at another project to replace that, but we're just in the early stages now, so we don't know the specifics, and we don't know the cost or the timeframe yet. But we are, we are planning another project.
All right, and then from my learning, if, just generally speaking, if you find yourself in an emergency situation, I would think typically there's more damage that you have to deal with than if you're dealing, you know, something to mitigate an issue.
Typically, that is the case. In this particular case, fortunately, the, we started the project before the sinkhole was able to grow very much, so we were able to control that. But typically, yes, it is gonna cost more in an emergency situation.
Gotcha. All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it. I'll go on to the next question.
May I, Madam Mayor, one more comment, please?
Yes, go ahead, Jim.
One of my concerns at the time, when we were making the repair, I knew that following the repair, we were going to do overlays, which we did, and we have a brand-new street at La Mesa and, and La Squali. And now, we're tearing up the new street to make repairs that I thought should have been done in the beginning. So, my whole point is, if we have a drain pipe that may fail, certainly we should go in and identify those, replace those, so that when we do put an overlay or a new street over the top of them, we then don't go back and have to tear that up again. We had a very rough intersection because it had been dug up before, and then we have a nice new intersection as a part of that project. That was a huge project on La Squali and La Mesa, and now we're tearing it up again. If there's a likelihood that in the future this pipe's gonna fail, for heaven's sakes, let's do it before we overlay the road. Seems like to me it's really costly to do it that way. That's all, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez, do you have any questions?
So, one other question that comes up with the conversation that's being deliberated right now with council is, looking at the repairs, and Mr. Cox talked about overlays that were recently done, however, we're having to tear up these new streets. We didn't do it prior to knowing that we had this 30-year turnover because we didn't have the actual metal. So, I don't know, per se, if, when the city was incorporated in the early 50s, 60s, we had already considered that, or is that just something new within the 30 days? But that was to contextualize my question, which is, how does the city engineer, along with his consultant and his team, that's formerly more educated in terms of the La Mesa and La Squali, use into its configuration the wear and tear that could be normalized, also those streets that have, that are more heavily trafficked versus if they're hierarchically less traveled, or rare traveled, or those that have a lot of these state rigs traveling? How are we considering that? Have we already done that to the effect that we're just looking at a mile and a half from Pacoima to Amethyst, or vice versa? Or is that just something that we're looking at a project that profoundly in the future can take its effect? Because we have 72, 74 square miles of nothing but city. So, I don't know in the scope of this item, if we're just discussing a certain square footage, or we're considering now the overlay of an entire city when we're talking about forecasting.
Was it a comment or a question? I'm sorry.
Question.
I think to answer the question, we're evaluating, and that's the tough challenge, Councilmember Gomez, is, as you identify, the large geography that we have and the 74 plus or minus square miles of city that includes a roadway network that requires constant attention. And that's always the challenge for us when it comes to prioritizing. This one, we're evaluating, I think, to answer the question directly. Considering all of those competing priorities, we're evaluating the ability of the city to attend to this next stretch, if you will, and we'll be coming back with recommendations. That recommendation will be, obviously, where this fits in the priority level, also considering the funding sources that are available to undertake that work.
And then, another question as well? Uh, let's see. So, I know this particular ratification of emergency repairs for, for the La Mesa and the Amethyst Road. So, my question is, I know today could not have been, or within the last 72 hours could not have been the actual date of emergency. We do have municipal codes that dictate and empower the authority of the city manager to bring in something, call it an emergency, and then have the ratification of the council. So, when was the date of the emergency set?
Um, it looks like the emergency declaration, if you'll go to page 581, 580 and 581, the emergency declaration was issued on, and signed on April 1st.
So, does that, does that recordation also initiate that that was the date where the emergency was not only found but recorded? Or that recordation, and it was found prior?
That same memorandum identifies that the actual failure, the sinkhole occurred on March 31st.
Because I have April 1st signatures, but the 31st of March has an initiation, which is what you're declaring, right? For my interpretation?
No, the actual declaration occurs on April 1st. The incident occurs on March 31st, which I believe is exactly one day before the actual declaration. So, to have a sense of what occurs is, once the failure is identified, the issue is identified. In this particular case, you had a sinkhole. Just looking at the calendar, it looks like March 31st was a Tuesday. So, likely what occurred is the area was secured by Public Works. So, we probably went out there with K rails and cones and flashers to at least secure the area. And then, the declaration occurs the very next day, that giving us the authority to work with emergency contractors on a, basically on a, on-call basis, to call the contractors in to start scoping and making the repairs.
And then, in that same language, we have the term confirm the emergency? I was thinking, instead of the word confirm, are you meaning to say to ratify? Or what do you mean when you say to confirm the emergency? Also, with the word approve the amendment, I'm looking at ratification of an amendment or take an acknowledgement. And tell me more of why this was an emergency, and why the amount of such configurations, such as the analysis quote-unquote, were concocted with such measures, which goes really back with what you were saying. Public Works, the 31st, came in, secured the area on the 1st, they did this. But there's a couple of gaps missing.
Couple what missing?
There's gaps between the story line.
Um, yeah, I don't quite see the gaps that you're talking about. I guess to explain the nature of the emergency is that the sinkhole wasn't planned, it just kind of happened. And because it happened, and it presented a potential threat to the public, I mean, this is in the roadway, so the emergency nature occurs, I believe, because now you've got a hole in a road where people are likely traveling fairly fast, because, I don't know, I would suspect that's a major arterial. I could be wrong about that. But because you have a threat to the safety of your motoring public, that in itself is the emergency nature for us to at least protect the area and then begin the emergency declaration process. Absent the emergency declaration process, we would have effectively had to wait to probably today to actually do what we did 20 days ago. So, that's really the nature of the emergency. Had we not been able to do what we did 20 days ago, we would literally be sitting out there still with K rails and a hole in the road and no progress in terms of making the repairs.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yes, there were gaps because clearly as I come in foundation to reading some of the HTML frozen text, I mean, I'm not getting the picture visually, you know, I wasn't there, I wasn't chatting with staff, you know? To me, it's just something that's probably just happened at the moment, and so, breaking the gap for me meant explaining some of the details that I wouldn't otherwise have been able to reiterate to any other... to reiterate to any other commoner, much less to myself. So I appreciate some of those filling in. Thank you. No further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez, do you have any questions?
No, I do. I don't, I'm sorry.
Mayor Garcia, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Let me see if there's any public. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on item 15? No public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we need a motion and a second for item 15.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I must second.
That's La Mesa. I'm sorry, who was it?
I believe-
Yeah, I must second. I must get recommendations.
This is Jim Cox. I second it.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Cox. Any further comments? I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We're on item number 16. CAL ID contract by and between the City of Victorville and County of San Bernardino for access to the state network to provide fingerprint services through the San Bernardino County Remote Access Network, RAN Board. The recommendation is that the city council approve the attached CAL ID contract for the period of July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2030. Authorize the city manager to execute said CAL ID contract and authorize the city manager to approve the annual payment for CAL ID services as required to administer said contract. Is there any questions of councilmembers? Councilmember Cox?
No questions.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, I have several questions. I'll welcome one. So what is the fiscal impact per year of our city's budget for this authorization? What was it in the past? I'm presuming this is the annual. What budgets are being affected? How does the city's contribution to this CAL ID affect its municipal boundaries and service to the communities? Is what I'm calling taxpayer subsidies for the County of San Bernardino share? And is the money being kept within the bounds of servicing the City of Victorville alone? Or do the monies get disseminated in the county's use and they disseminate and use as the projects come about with CAL ID?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the contract, I can't identify exactly what the contract is going to cost over the course of the 10 years, because there is a formula that supports the annual assessment that's charged under this contract. And as a part of that assessment, population is a component of the formula. And so the number could be variable. It could go down if population were to go down. It's not likely. So I think it's easy to assume it'll go up. But it'll go up, I would say, consistent with what you see in terms of population increases. But because we don't know what that's going to be, it's hard to identify the exact cost. We could separately provide you what the costs have been over the last 10 years. That would require a little bit of effort. But we haven't seen dramatic year-to-year increases on this. And then speaking to, I guess, the jurisdictional element, and I think a good illustration might be in page 609, because we effectively, along with other jurisdictions, participate in this program. And there's basically a proportionate share being assessed to each jurisdiction. So we pay part of a larger cost. And that part of the larger cost is for a proportionate share of service, given our jurisdictional boundaries. Something that we use specifically in the jurisdictional boundaries. Others may use it in theirs. But of course, they're going to pay their proportionate shares associated with that. And then finally, this is something that is obviously a major operational support tool for our Sheriff's Department. Certainly, they rely on it not only to support identifying folks that are subject to arrest, but it's certainly used to identify folks and confirm folks, the identity of folks prior to a release from prison. So with that, this item was actually co-authored by myself and the police chief, Rick Bessinger. And on the operational side, Rick is on the line, I believe, to answer any operational questions associated with this contract.
Yes, the city manager on that. Was there any specific questions in reference to it?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I'm sorry. I'll yield back to the council unless the council has specific questions of the police chief.
Ms. Gomez, did you, do you have any questions?
Yes. Yes, so hearing you, Keith, say that there is a proportional share. Now, my understanding of a proportional share is not just something that's legitimately bounded by city boundaries, but I'm reading into a proportional share that's more scaffolded and overlaid and weaved in to others that would really minimize the cost that each city would have to pay in, because our residents, even though they may live in one city, they can reside and have, they have one domicile reside in different areas. So I don't know if you, if you have, if you can clarify that proportional share is type of understanding from what I've told you, what I see a proportional share is versus what I think this 609 document has, first of all. And then, second thing is, when I heard Cox and how the sheriff's use these types of resources for people being subject to arrest or released from prison, immediately in my mind, I saw the last agenda on April 7th. I think it was 7th, or one prior to that, where we had the cameras, or I'm sorry, the plate readers, which is almost synonymous to the description of the small street, the understanding of this. And is that the case?
The latter part of what you asked, and it sounded like it was trying to be in relation to a previous action item involving the ALPRs. And I'll let the police chief eventually answer that. But getting back to the domicile comment that you made or question that you made, I don't necessarily think it's that granular. The proportion is more so based upon the jurisdictional makeup and the population, the total population falling within that jurisdiction. So I think it's that straightforward, not getting into the smaller complexity of whether a member of that population really resides in one jurisdiction or the other. And so with that, maybe you can articulate your question better for Police Chief Rick Bessinger as to the relationship with the ALPR.
Well, if Rick is on the line. So really, my question is, in terms of listening to what some of the coverings and the reliance is that the counties do have in terms of individuals being arrested or coming out of their arrest situation. It's my understanding that there's a lot of populations that do hear that these license plate readers are being used not only as invasion of certain types of privacy, but to collect information that can later be used to-
You have 30 seconds?
What I would call double jeopardy for a lot of these people that may be arrested or may be innocent of certain items. And it seems like there's a correlation with this particular item. But of course, I'm not the expert on any understanding by listening to your responses.
Yes, yes, ma'am, Madam Mayor and City Council. This has nothing to do with ALPRs. This is strictly in reference to the identification of individuals via fingerprints primarily and other avenues which are used with CAL ID. And as the city manager mentioned, sometimes when people are released out of prison, booked into county jail, when their fingerprints are run through the system to verify who they are. That's where this goes. And these folks are the ones that verify identities. That has absolutely nothing to do with ALPRs. ALPR is a completely different system that doesn't have anything to do with this organization. ALPRs collect data on license plates, which has been used for investigative purposes, as we discussed in the last council meeting. So there's really not any connection in these whatsoever from an investigative standpoint and/or from an identification standpoint.
Okay, thank you. And finally, don't they interconnect when you can use different systems to look at information to safeguard what you're looking for?
I don't understand. By interconnect, what do you mean when you're looking for something? If, well, I guess I would say if I ran a license plate-
To get to an outcome?
Yes. Yes, we currently have various systems that we utilize. So if I, even now, without using an ALPR, but if I, for instance, ran a license plate and obtained a name of the register owner, and then I was able to get a date of birth, I could then, through different systems, check to see if that person had a valid license or any warrants for their arrest, which that goes through various state and federal systems when you're looking for warrants and things like that. So there's a vast array of systems that law enforcement uses to attempt to identify people on a daily basis.
Thank you. No further questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
Let me, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on item number 16? There's no public comment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Now we need a motion and a second for item 16.
This is Jim Cox. I'd be glad to make the motion to approve the contract with CAL ID with Sheriff's Department to provide CAL ID services.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments? No further comments. I'll take a roll call vote.
Yes, I'll go ahead and make the comment. And it goes through my vote, reasoning for my vote. I just want the public to know and anybody else know that my votes definitely go with rhyme and reason. So for instance, my vote here is the questions that I were asking. It's not that I'm against not police officers using and obtaining and retaining and executing lawful arrests. But it does also go to jeopardize a lot of the times we do get individuals who don't violate certain things and they end up in the prison system. And that really is very detrimental. And there's no restitution to have anyone that has been through the system, used and abused for a certain outcome. And so please don't misinterpret my vote. It's just the way that I vote because I see certain aspects and certain things that our community public also voices. And as one of the many voices, my vote goes towards those types of decisions. Thank you.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
Nay.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no. Item number 17 is to approve the 46th Amendment to Law Enforcement Contract, number 94-909-A46, for the period of July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021, and authorize the mayor or her designee to process all documents required for this agreement. Approve the memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Victorville and the Victor Valley Union High School District for the same period, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for the agreement. And approve the MOU by and between the City of Victorville and the Victor Elementary School District for the same period, and authorize the city manager or his designee to process all documents required for this agreement. Councilmember questions? Councilmember Cox?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Jones?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, so I have several questions. I'll put them together. So when was the MOU first granted? I'm assuming because of the 46th, since 46 times current running today. Is this a mere reflection of the former MOU and the contract? And are we not considering the proration of school closures and the monies from the last month of a part of a new contract? And did we not consider negotiating the impact of school closures for these last few weeks and for the upcoming months? And why are we not reconsidering that in the totality during COVID-19 public health crisis?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is Keith Metzler. As to when the MOUs originated, I can't answer that question. I don't have that history. But I can tell you that, as far back as I can recall, the document has been similarly used, memorializing the relationship between our contract for sheriff services and the use by and the dedication to sheriff's deputies to both the Victor Valley High School District and the elementary school district. So I think the one thing that's been done just over the past couple of years is tidying up and making the approval of these items more so done at the same time so that there isn't a potential exposure to the city to where we approve a contract with the Sheriff's Department to include SROs and then find out later that the school districts don't necessarily want the same level of service. So we've started approving these closer together over the course of the last couple of years. As to the consideration of the proration, certainly, that's not something that has been thought through as this pandemic has really kind of caught us all, I guess, kind of quickly. But notwithstanding that, the need for the services, as I understand them, don't go away. There may be a lesser role, considering the fact that schools are out. But I can tell you, at least I believe in the elementary school case, that there still are needs. And I still believe that in the high school case, just a different level of work that they're doing. And perhaps the police chief can articulate better, perhaps, what those SROs are doing during this period of time. But notwithstanding that, that's not exactly how the contract works. These are deputies, these are individuals, where you just can't necessarily put them on unemployment. They're a service that has to continue uninterrupted if we choose to service them up. So I wouldn't advise changing the contract so that there's a proration to accommodate the COVID-19. I would recommend we continue down the path that we're going.
Ms. Gomez, did you have any other questions?
No, no more questions.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
No questions.
Mayor Garcia?
No questions.
And I do believe I have one speaker. Romero Rodriguez, are you? Romero, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, I was just listening to the city manager, Keith Metzler, saying that the contract, it can't be furloughed, it can't be dismissed. Right now it's reality. I can't see why we're gonna contract the five school resource officers and pay them $1,053,000 and there's no school going on. I noticed we have 95 officers or over 90 some officers compared to 70 something before. We have businesses closed, less traffic, and we have less revenue coming in. And I don't know if I'm reading you correct, but I thought the captain was making $259,000. It shows me here it's $401,529,000, half, almost half a million dollars. Now, the two lieutenants are making $327,000 each. The ten sergeants are $279,249 each, police officer. And the 62 officers, tier two, they're $204,426,000 per year that these people are making. As to, you know, what they're stating that, you know, we can't just fire them. I know there's contracts with the unions and the unions are very powerful for these entities. I know Mr. Wilks and Obernoty, that's all they represent, the unions of these organizations, not the people. But we end up paying for that unnecessarily. So the resource officers, there's no school. What are they, you know, people's houses? And check on them? It's reality now. Property taxes, businesses, sales taxes are going down. And we have to oversee, the city manager and the city, we have to rethink this contract and what we're gonna pay. I thought it was $25 million, it's now up to $29 million? We were supposed to save having our own police force. Seems like we're paying more. And I think it's, there's some positions here that are really unnecessary. I think if this is correct, that those are the annual salaries of these officers. I think compared to salaries from other cities and states that I've overlooked, this is insane. This is for like salaries for people, for cities with over a million, over a million people.
You have 30 seconds.
So I think that the city and maybe with a third party oversee and oversee exactly the budget for the police force for the city for that quarter. Thank you very much, we're really overpaying. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public would like to speak on this item? Madam Mayor, those are all the comments.
Thank you. I need a motion and a second for item 17.
I move the recommendations down.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Cox, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any further comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Though the comment was made that we're supposed to save money by having our own police force. Mr. Romero unfortunately got police department and fire department mixed up. We've never discussed having our own police force. And this is a contract with the county that continued when the city incorporated in 1962 and continues to this day. Just to clarify the record, thanks.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, thank you. And to further clarify, the schools are out now. This contract is for the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. So the upcoming fiscal year, it doesn't relate to what's happening now and has been served on governing board at a local school district for eight years. I understand the importance of SROs and complete support of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, you will notice again that reflected enable is not that I don't support the partnership of the city with the school system and the indemnification possibilities that could come with any harmful unpartnership that were to go of that matter. But instead, my consideration in making my decisions is currently we're facing unprecedented times, nothing that the history of the United States has ever come across. And that's in terms of the president speaking, that this is nothing we've ever seen in history. And I think a lot of us have not only watched the news, but social media amongst each other do realize that there's some facts to calling something unprecedented in the history of the United States. And with that being said, we need to start considering things right now. And the decision makers are exactly what we do. Or I would hope that we do take in consideration what happens at the moment, not going with status quo and quoting our essential expertise in a matter when we're not experts when it comes to something that's been unprecedented and we've not lived through something of this nature. So when we look, for example, in the universal principles, actuarians pick metrics to prorate and they come up with actual costs for insurance, for instance. However, that was an example and an analogy for those that would care to understand or open up to what I'm trying to state. However, this global pandemic is causing a lot of issues all over our nation. And particularly, we're talking about the city of Victorville. A lot of the businesses have closed down. A lot of these businesses will never open again the doors. And that's something that we weren't expected, but it's something that forced. It wasn't like an earthquake, this is the global meltdown that we're facing at this moment. And it's our duty to create things that are more equitable. We have to try to bring a sense of accessibility to social justice. And I can't in good consciousness or in good conscience vote for an item and sleep at night because there's other ramifications to what our voting is going to happen now. So I know I've heard that it's from July 1st, but remember, we're making the vote today now. We do have under our authority to push something over to July 1st and really look at the merits of what our decisions are. Because every decision and indecision is a clear, direct impact and undirect impact to every single resident that lives here and all those visitors and stakeholders that are here. So that's my reasoning for my actual vote, which a lot of times does explain some of the sanity of what I go through to rationally think of steward manners and what I'm doing here today at this moment as a council member. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Ramirez? Any further comments?
Yes, I would like to say that nothing in this world is free. And the welfare of our residents should be our priority, which includes their children. Therefore, this memorandum is for the welfare and the well-being of all the children. And it's gonna cost money. There's no question about it, like I said, nothing is for free. However, you cannot equate business with lives. One life is worth all the money in the world, especially if that is your child. There is no replacement. And yes, it's true, businesses are not profiting at this point in time. But I know that American businessmen are, and women, will be making profit with ample time. But the welfare of the students should always be placed first. So therefore, I can understand the reasoning of everyone. But we were elected to represent everyone in our community. And we must remember that the well-being and the welfare of all is our priority. So therefore, even though it causes money, I would rather have them be safe than for me to be sorry that I could not spend a dollar on their lives to protect them. And that's how I feel about where I stand.
Mayor Garcia, any further comments?
Yes, I am the first one to say that I really do believe that safety and the safety and protection of our children should be the first priority in our life. Having lost our granddaughter. I know the pain that goes with it. And I don't mean to keep bringing that up, but the money that it's gonna cost to continue protecting our children is worth that and more. And so that's all that I have to say at this time.
Okay, then no further comments. I have a motion by Councilmember Cox and a second by Councilmember Jones. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cox?
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez?
May.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Gomez voting no. Now we're on to item 18, public comments. And I do have a few public comments that I will read into the record. I will also time myself. And I will read these verbatim. And the first one comes in from Arnold Roca. Says, "Esteemed city council members, I respectfully submit for your action the assistance with unlawful use of the utility easement road by off-road highway vehicles located in the square area between Balsam Road and 7th Avenue and Lidero Street and Jasmine Street. I have contacted the city's code enforcement department and sheriffs to register my complaint of the excessive use of the easement. No action to stop or eliminate the use of the easement road has occurred. For the past month, soon after homeschooling began, residents in this area have endured hours, as early as noon to as late as 8:00 PM, of constant noise and massive dust fallout caused by the OHV vehicles. These riders are extremely bothersome and aggravating after the many hours of riding. The amount of OHV vehicles that race through the easement are as few as one, but as many in the double digits. In the easement, a small dirt hill has been erected whereby the riders go and at high rates of speed to jump this hill. The hill is located between Cypress Avenue and 11th Avenue and Lidero Street and Jasmine Street. OHV riders constantly encroach on mine and other residents' personal properties as we have provided the utility companies with approximately 35 feet of our property for use of the easement. At times, these vehicles use excessive speeds that I fear will cause great injury to the residents in our area and our property. Playing with my grandchildren outside, having a barbecue in my backyard while these unlawful riders race in the background is annoying and makes things difficult to these activities. It's hard to determine if these riders are from the immediate area, but does it matter? Something must be done to eliminate the unlawful use of easements. I submit that I did not sign on to live in these conditions when there are codes to outlaw the use of the easement road for these activities and knowing that there is sufficient space in the desert to utilize. Your assistance is truly needed to put a stop to this activity. If you need additional information or wish to contact me, please reply to this email." Okay, the next one is from Maggie Martin. And again, I will read this verbatim and time myself for three minutes. "Here's my question, citizens of Victorville, who in the hell is running the show? It appears to me that it is Councilmember Blanca Gomez. Here's your heads up, everyone. Regarding the last council meeting of April 7, 2020, we have a real problem here. At the behest of Councilmember Gomez, matters were discussed and acted on that were not properly noticed on the agenda, which is required under the Ralph M. Brown Act and the California State Constitution. Our right to meaningful participate in the meeting was denied. Councilmember Gomez made an unlawful motion to proceed and a vote was taken. As a result, Councilmember Gomez, Ramirez, and Mayor Garcia voted in favor of changing the City of Victorville's policy and procedures manual in direct defiance of the law and its own established policies and practices. I strongly encourage you to go to the city's website and listen to item number 22. You're going to be shocked that this is happening in Victorville. It's the people's business. The preamble, Government Code 54950 of the Ralph M. Brown Act states the legislator intent in enacting this chapter, the legislative finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, and councils and the other public agencies in this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. The California Constitution, Article Number 1, Section 3B1 states, "The people have the right of access to information concerning the conduct of people's business and therefore the meetings of public bodies and the writings of public officials. An agency shall be open to public scrutiny." The public's right to participate in meetings, Government Code 549542, or of the Ralph Brown Act states, "At least 72 hours before a regular meeting, the legislative body of the local agency or its designee shall post an agenda containing a brief general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed at the meeting, including items to be discussed in closed session. A brief general description of an item generally need not exceed 20 words." In its 2003 pamphlet about the Brown Act, the Office of the Attorney General opines as follows. "The purpose of brief general description is to inform interest members of the public about the subject matter under consideration so that they can determine whether to monitor or participate in the meeting of the body." The Victorville Municipal Code Title 2, Chapter 2.2. That is all the time that I have for this public comment. I could have a copy emailed to you tomorrow. I have another public comment submitted by Robert Harriman. "Why would the mayor kowtow to another council member who has zero legal experience but has insatiable desire for power when the city attorney has offered his professional opinion? Mayor Garcia, are you aware you too can be found guilty of a misdemeanor by participating in the act? A member of the city council can be guilty of a misdemeanor under certain circumstances, specifically under California Government Code Section 54959. Each member of the legislative body who attends a meeting of that legislative body where action is taken is in violation of the Brown Act and where the member intends to deprive the public of information to which the member knows or has reason to know the public is entitled, is guilty of a misdemeanor. Please note that the member must have the intent to deprive the public of information to which it is entitled. In listening to the comments of Councilmember Garcia, it was evident intended to take action on a specific item that was not specifically agendized for public comment and input. Mayor Garcia, you are guilty of violating the Brown Act. That's not the standard of a competent or capable mayor." There's another one from Deion Hudgens. "Other cities in our area are live streaming meetings from council chambers. Why can't Victorville, being able to watch the meeting online or view it as a video so the agenda could be viewed, would be more interactive than attempting to follow an audio broadcast that can only be accessed by phone? I hope Victorville will give the citizens more consideration with conducting meetings." Those are all the ones that I have to read into the record. And let me check to see if anyone on the phone. Is there anyone that would like to provide public comment at this time?
Yes, I would.
Okay, could you please state your name?
My name is Chef Basil.
Please, go ahead, you have three minutes?
Yes, I'd like to thank the mayor and just the entire city for being the, you know, first responders on taking care of us out here. At the chef and at the ACS chef and my wife, Lusit and Gulo. We've been dealing with the restaurant owners who are losing their businesses. And as the ACS chef nationally, we've been trying to, we partner with Grubhub and other agencies to try to help businesses here even locally, to try to make sure that at least they'll get down in food. But again, the most important thing is we want to thank the entire council for looking out for us and taking the first act, one of the first cities, you know, other than big cities to take the act on keeping us safe. And then finally, I'd like to say, if you don't know, happy birthday to the mayor. And when this is over with, mayor, my wife and I are gonna, well, take that back. Instead of me, my wife, who taught me how to make the winning cake, we're gonna make you a big old birthday cake. Happy birthday, mayor.
Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else that would like to provide public comment?
Hello?
Hello.
I'd like to speak also.
Okay.
Yes, my name is Ramon Rodriguez. I'd like to speak.
Okay, you have three minutes?
Okay, thank you. Uh, I heard this is over the responses for the appropriations of the funds for the police department. It's just overwhelming how strong the police unions are, how strong they are to actually support the candidates. We've seen, uh, candidates like Mr. Obernolte that just run completely just supporting the unions and not representing the people. And so they get elected because they're very well-funded. We saw in Santa Ana, one of the councilwomen there opposed appropriations for the police department, only to have a three hundred thousand dollar fund, uh, redacted against her, uh, to remove her from offices. The following day, these are powerful organizations. I understand that. You know, they say they protect us and look over us. It's been six months since I asked, uh, the police chief for the city for demographics of the police department, us being almost sixty percent Hispanic. We never got that. We never got the report over three, uh, African-American people that got shot one Monday, one Tuesday, and one Thursday. The reasoning, we never got a complete answer with the Duncan Hicks incident in the Victorville Police Department. We asked, we've never gotten a complete response. We just want clarification and accountability. And I still believe, you know, we do need protection. We, you know, fire departments, police departments, they're here because they know the risk. And the thing is, I still believe that we have to really oversee the city, what's gonna happen. We don't know the schools are gonna open next year. We don't know if they're gonna open ever. We don't know if they're gonna be home schools till they come up with a vaccine. Look, it's been forty years and we don't have a vaccine for the HAV virus. You think we're gonna have a cure for this thing next week? So, the thing is, we're really spending out with a lot of money, nothing coming in. We're looking at a very ugly depression, and we're still going ahead and improving, uh, these allotments. We, I think the city manager and the city, and maybe a neutral party should look into this and see how the city is being on the money and everything. Because they should understand also, we're in the predicament too. With the taxpayers, we're not working either. We're not getting money. The payments aren't coming in. The stimulus checks aren't coming in. So, people are going hungry. And I asked the question,
You have thirty seconds?
If that was the salary for the captain, I asked the question if that was a salary of four hundred and one thousand dollars for the captain and two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for the two lieutenants. Nobody answered me. Like I said, we're a city of a hundred and twenty-two thousand people, not three million. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide public comment? Madam Mayor, those are all the public comments I have.
Thank you so much. So now we move on to reports from our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I do have some updates for you, and largely they're related to, uh, just some, uh, updates since our last meeting. As you know, as we all know, we've been under a declaration of local emergency. We've stood up our emergency operations center. Uh, we've had a very dedicated team of city staff members assigned to and helping run that EOC. And we shared with you at the last meeting a lot of our accomplishments. Uh, we've had, uh, quite a bit more since. And one of the specific things at the last meeting the council did ask about was outreach to the senior community. So I'll share with you, addressing, um, seniors and at-risk individuals. We've compiled a list of resources available, uh, since that time to assist our seniors and at-risk individuals. Uh, this list includes information such as food banks, delivery services, financial assistance, and helpful hotlines for information about COVID-nineteen and free mental health counseling services. Knowing that not all seniors have access to the internet, we've created a flyer highlighting these helpful resources, and we've mailed them out to more than two thousand seniors and at-risk individuals on Friday, April seventeenth. Our code enforcement officers, uh, delivered this flyer to sixty-eight nursing homes directly, uh, convalescent homes and residential care facilities for distribution to those residents. Uh, the same flyer was also mailed to two local churches and emailed to nineteen churches for distribution to their parishioners. Additional resources are available on our city website at victorville.ca.gov/coronavirus, or at quicklink, uh, vv.city/seniors. We also assigned staff available to assist seniors and at-risk individuals who call City Hall for help. Mayor Garcia, our very own, recorded a video message about these resources that is posted on our social media channels and our website. Uh, currently, we're working to identify a list of clubs and organizations that cater to seniors. Once this list is compiled, uh, we will mail this flyer to these community groups as well. Uh, additionally, we've, uh, we have addressed resources for small businesses. On April seventh, uh, we added business recovery to our EOC objectives. Um, as we reported on April seventh, we compiled a list of federal, state, and county resources available to help our small businesses combat the negative impacts of COVID-nineteen. These resources are available at our website as well, uh, at the same sites that I just mentioned. Uh, on April ninth, we distributed an e-blast, that's an electronic blast, to our local businesses, alerting them to these small business resources on our website. Our team continues to add, uh, to this list as new resources become available to assist our small businesses. We share these new resources with our small businesses via e-blasts and posts to our social media channels and our website. Small businesses in need of assistance are welcome to call our Economic Development Department at seven-six-zero-nine-five-five, five-zero-three-two. We've also addressed outreach to our nursing homes. In order to promote safety at our nursing home, uh, we distributed, uh, the County Department of Public Health Order from April sixth to our local nursing home, convalescent homes, and residential care facilities. This order, which outlines important COVID-nineteen screening procedures for nursing home staff, was distributed to a total of sixty-eight facilities on April seventeenth. We've also addressed virtual recreation center and virtual library. For residents who are looking for ways to stay active or entertained during the stay-at-home order, we've launched our virtual recreation center and virtual library on our city's website. In the virtual recreation center, you'll find fun craft tutorials, virtual museum tours, free fitness videos, and a lot more. Uh, through our virtual library, you can request books to be delivered to your home, and you can sign up to receive audiobooks, ebooks, comics, and digital magazines. And if you're in need of a good laugh at this difficult time, I suggest you check out the dad jokes with our city librarian. Uh, also go to the same website, victorville.ca.gov/coronavirus, and then click on the button that identifies in-home activities. We continue to focus on, uh, making sure that we have adequate, uh, uh, personal protective equipment. We continue to work, uh, to acquire, uh, and distribute to our employees, uh, work in high-risk environments. Earlier this month, we began distributing surgical masks to our fire and police personnel to put on individuals they must transport as precautionary measures. We've also been supplying PPE for use at our city's three homeless shelters. We've also coordinated, uh, with state, county, and local agencies. Our EOC continues to coordinate our disaster response with state and county and local agencies. Recently, we've been working with county and local hospitals to plan a local field treatment hospital. Should this field treatment hospital be needed, our paramedics will work with the hospital personnel to provide care to individuals with less, with less serious injuries and conditions. Uh, we have also addressed, uh, uh, the need for FEMA reimbursement. By the end of this week, we'll submit our first reimbursement request to FEMA. Uh, the submission will be to cover expenses the city has incurred during, uh, this response, uh, between March seventeenth and April sixteenth. This request, we're calculating at approximately two hundred and fifty-four thousand. And then finally, uh, a reminder, although the doors to City Hall are closed, our virtual doors are open to you. I encourage you, anyone in need of assistance, to call us at seven-six-zero-nine-five-five-five-thousand, or to connect with us on Facebook, Twitter, or Instagram. And we continue to post helpful resources on our website at, uh, the victorville.ca.gov/coronavirus. Madam Mayor, thank you for allowing me, um, and I'm available for any questions or comments you have.
Thank you so much. I mean, there is so much that has been done. Thank you and all staff and everyone else that has participated in, uh, bringing all this, uh, to comply with all the needs that we have. Um, does anyone have any questions, our city manager?
Uh, thank you. Not a question, but a comment that I'm pleased, uh, of all the work that's being done by staff and, uh, the comments that I hear, which I don't hear very many because I'm staying at home, is that the public is generally very pleased with what's going on. And so that reflects good on the city and certainly the council and all the people that are involved in this process. So, Keith, as the manager and administrative leader, thank you for the work and all the employees that are assisting you. Good job.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah, I also have a, I also have a comment.
Uh, yes.
What Keith was stating.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Jones?
Thanks, thank you, Madam Mayor. But, well, I certainly echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I've had a number of people tell me how much they appreciate, um, the city, uh, uh, really leaning into the community. I mean, my goodness, um, there's so much work being done to anticipate every major need, but we're all the way down to entertaining and providing good laughs through a few daddy jokes. So, you gotta give hats off to this team that's worked together to really make sure that we're doing the best we can for our community. Keith met with us and a fabulous job in my mind, and, um, and that comes, um, partly, um, because he has such a great team. Their, their, the rhythm and the way they work together is, is quite something to see. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, this is, uh, questions or thank, thanking our city manager. Uh, we haven't come to report, uh, council members yet. Uh, Ms. Gomez, did you have something to comment or to thank?
Yeah, so these are council comments?
Uh, no, we're just thanking our city manager for the report that he just gave. I haven't come to report yet.
Okay, yes, I wanted to comment on that.
Did you want to wait until reports?
Well, no, I, I actually, what Keith said I wanted to comment on. So, um, I actually appreciate that Keith went ahead, that Keith went ahead with the team and started, um, not only serving but providing informational resources to our least disadvantaged and started partnering with what we need to provide for our senior populations, although that was an item that three of us voted for, Ms. Jones didn't want, and Cox went away. I'm glad that Keith understands the need for our senior population to have that connectivity in terms of what you've been doing, Keith. So I appreciate that you took that onto your own, onto your own. You didn't need to vote for that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Rita, did you have something?
I would like to say thank you so much for doing such a great job. Uh, it makes me proud to be able to say that I am a part of the city of Victorville and that the city manager is making my job so much easier. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you.
And, and I also want to say again, you know, thank you so much, uh, Keith and, uh, your staff and everyone else, uh, within our city, you know. Uh, I just appreciate and I am so proud and to hear, you know, the comments that I hear, you know, that our city is always, uh, willing and ready, uh, to be there for the safety of our community and our residents. Uh, so now we move on to, uh, item number twenty, discussion and possible action regarding upcoming agenda items. Uh, Mr. Cox, did you have anything for, um, the upcoming agenda item?
Um, just, I had a question in regard to the agenda, a couple of phone calls that, that Hesperia and Apple Valley both were continuing to have their council meetings in the City Hall, but the public wasn't allowed there. Uh, I'm not, I'm not saying we should do that. I do think it makes it a little easier though when we're web-streamed and the people can see the council in action. So, I'm not sure when this, uh, emergency's going to raise, erase itself, or, but, but I'm looking forward when we can all go back in the council and conduct this so that not only the public can see the council, but we can interact with each other. So, uh, hopefully everyone stays well and we can do this, uh, soon. I don't, I don't think that's the agenda item. It's not a request, but I'd like to see it happen. So, but I'm not, I'm not pushing it. I'm not gonna be premature. I'm not requesting it, but if it comes up, I'm all for it.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Jones, did you have anything to organize?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I have no requests at this time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Gomez, do you have anything to organize?
Yeah, I just have one item, and I'm gonna be very specific since I'm told that I'm not very specific at times, although policy manual handbook is always very specific. Everything's on the playbook. So, specifically on chapter nine, on page forty-four, there's also a subsequent, um, paragraph that delineates the delegation of council affirmation and standing committees. And it's been brought to my attention that there's potential violations that have already occurred behind closed doors. And in order to mitigate and bring to the floor, to our audience, that nothing here is done behind closed doors, and if it was, as this potentially has been stated it is, I would like to make it a rectification by speaking about it publicly during the next council meeting as a potential, um, not only action, but also discussion that's gonna be coming up. And that's just specifically on the handbook for chapter nine and has to do with standing committees. There's a violation that has occurred, and I think we need to bring it to the floor once again and, um, rectify what has happened because there's a lot of things being murmured that we're doing things behind closed doors, and that's not the way the city council works. And these are one of those factors that need to be brought to light, especially when we, um, hold the Brown Act as a violation and use it as one of our cores to say, um, this is a red flag. I think we need to talk about it openly and publicly for the next council meeting, and that's my motion.
Okay, and that was, uh, what, um, uh, page what? Forty-four?
It's, it's, yeah, it's on page forty-four, specifically in chapter nine, and it has to do with standing committees and the confirmation of our delegation, which is very specific in our policy, but it has not been followed. So I just want to make sure that if the people who were a part of it realize that a lot of us want to rectify, we're not trying to point fingers but make things better because we don't want to start using the brown act this, finger that, which is being used currently.
Very good.
That's why I'm motioning.
With... Okay, that's your motion.
I have a question for clarification. I have a question for clarification before I know whether to second. Um, so I, I see something on page forty-five regarding standing committees, but I would want to know what standing committee, subcommittee is in question before I know whether we should have a discussion.
I, I wish I could elaborate, but because the audience has been hearing it's not notified, I would be violating the policy rights, not only of my colleagues, but also the audience to be able to be more specific. That's why that discussion is merited, and it's not going beyond the standing committees and the confirmation of the delegation. It would stay beyond the confines of chapter nine, dealing with standing committees and dealing with the delegation. And that's as far as I'd push it because anything else, I think Andre would agree with me, that we would be talking out of something not being notified for general public to be participating.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking for argument one way or the other. I'm asking for, so, I just want to know so I can, I can vote intelligently. So, page forty-five point one, that's what you're talking about?
I just said chapter nine, and I made a, um...
I'm sorry.
I said, there's something within page forty-four.
Page forty-five.
So I'm trying to make it a little vague because I don't want to confine it to one item. It's really two, the delegation, delegation confirmation and the standing committees. Those are the top, the main topics that are signed within, I think they're found within chapter nine.
Okay. So what is the motion, may I ask? So what is the motion, may I ask?
I'm sorry, what, what is it?
She wants you to repeat the motion?
Uh, so my motion is to discuss and do possible action in two subtopics, standing committees and the confirmation of delegation. And they're found, I believe, in chapter nine.
I second it.
I have a motion by council member Gomez, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. Take a roll call vote. Council member, call.
I have a question.
Oh.
Comment?
Okay.
I don't, I, I remember before that we had an item on the agenda, possible action, and that was interpreted that because it was a possible action, the city council could take any action it wanted. And yet, my belief is that's a violation of the Brown Act itself. If you state the action you're going to take and it's publicized, people can show up, but possible action can mean anything. So I would, I would request that we be more specific on what we're gonna put on the agenda so the public knows exactly what we're going to talk about. I've listened to this very carefully and I still don't have any idea what, what this motion really means. Are they gonna do away with these? Are we gonna appoint, reappoint? What? I don't know.
The question of discussion and review. That's it.
Well, the discussion and review is totally different than possible action.
You heard action. I heard review.
Okay. Yeah, so if it's for discussion and review, all for it. But if it's for an action that's not named, I, I question what the motive is.
Council member Gomez, could you clarify, is it for action or review?
So we have a tendency, a status quo, businesslike mentality. We have a discussion and possible action. I don't know how each member would like to interpret discussion and possible action, but we always have had a discussion and then someone has made a motion. So I don't know how it's different today from, since 2016.
It's not different at all. In fact, when we have a discussion, possible action, following the discussion, the action has generally been to put it on the council agenda for, for an action of the council or not. It wasn't to go ahead and make the decision because I don't think you can make the decision without telling the public what the likely decision is going to be. A discussion and a consideration or put it for future agenda, but that's total different the last time at the council. This council said, remember this council said, since it said possible action, you took an action, but the public had no idea that that action was going to be coming along. So I'm in agreement with, with Rita, that, that totally different. And I, I'm in agreement with that, but not an action unless it's clear that the action is to be to put it on the agenda to then take an action that either amends, changes, adds, or deletes a resolution or ordinance.
Well, what's the difference between possible action? I think you just described it. It would take a modification by the majority of the council or those other two verb actions that you used?
Well, but no, you can't, you can't discuss an item and then take an action when that action hasn't been contemplated by the general public. The action is, should have been to put it on the future agenda to, you know, modify or throw it out, but to say, oh, since we said possible action, now we can take whatever action we want. And that's why you got the two complaints tonight from third parties or that, not due to the council. They didn't anticipate that an action was going to occur.
Okay, let me interrupt. Andre, how should she handle this? Okay, she wants to discuss, uh, something on page forty-four.
Right.
Of, uh, chapter nine, commissions and committees. So how does she handle that? Just a discussion at the next council meeting?
Well, the, the question becomes how much specificity you have in the description of the agenda item. And from what I'm hearing from council member Gomez, is she wants to discuss the provisions of the policy manual that address standing subcommittees and then I'm not sure with specificity what it is with respect to delegations, but the, the clearest way to do it would be to have a discussion and review and then to the extent the council decides it wants to take action, it would be preferable to do that at a subsequent meeting. That's the safest way to do it. If you want to have possible action as part of the motion, you should be very specific as to what that action might in fact be. Is it to disband subcommittees? Is it to change the appointment process of subcommittees? If it gets that specificity, then you possibly could have possible action, but just to talk about subcommittees and just to talk about delegation in and of itself is probably not adequate.
Okay, I think she may understand this. Uh, Ms. Gomez, you need to, uh, agendize for discussion and review and then we proceed further.
Okay, so I see. So what it is, is because we need four fifths of the people to vote, and if it doesn't go that way, if it's only three people, that we wouldn't even discuss it. Is that what, that's what I'm hearing, right?
No, it is...
Or to have at least four people.
There's no, no requirement.
Discuss and review.
There's no requirement for four people on an issue like this. It's a majority vote. The issue is whether or not there's enough specificity in the motion for the public to understand what it is you're voting on. When the item is just subcommittees, that doesn't tell the public what exactly you're voting on. So the recommendation would be to have a motion to discuss and review to the extent you get more specificity at that meeting, then it could certainly be agendized for the subsequent meeting.
Well, on April seventh, um, Mr. Dibranowski, you stated that it takes four fifths of this council to place anything on the agenda.
I did not state that.
Saying what I'm saying.
I did not state that. I said there are certain requirements in the policy manual that require a four fifths vote, one of which is to change the rules with respect to the appointment of the mayor. There is also a four fifths requirement with respect to making, uh, changes from following Rosenberg's rules. Does not require a four fifths vote on every issue. Most issues are...
They get misunderstood. Has four fifths, four fifths was required to add the seniors to the agenda so we can have a master plan, but we only had three people, one absent and one, one said no. Therefore, it never made it to the agenda.
That's because you were changing the rules and attempting to change the rules. And to change the rules in the policy manual and/or to change Rosenberg's, that does require a four fifths vote. But to address an issue like this, that would be a majority vote to change something with respect to the subcommittees or delegation.
I don't understand, but so if someone else, because obviously mine only has a second, we can vote on it, someone else can grab that and make whatever suggestions so it goes through. So if mine dies, someone else can take it and redistribute it.
Council member Ramirez, you suggested that the motion be to discuss and review. If you make that as a quote modification and council member Gomez is accepting of that, we could vote on that.
Okay, I, well, I, yes, I will make the modifications that we will discuss to review. Pages forty-four in reference to standing committees and I don't have it in front of me, so I can't...
And delegation.
Other pages, it's inclusive, but it's for discussion and review.
Council member Gomez, are you okay with that modification?
Well, like, like I said, she can go ahead and take it and it's a new motion. Mine should die if we take a vote and it says a no. And that's how I'm willing to go with it.
Okay, then we will consider it a substitute motion at that point.
Like I said, she can go ahead and take it and it's a new motion. Mine should die if we take a vote.
Did I lose somebody?
No, I, I do have a, a substitute motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez.
Is there a second to that?
Is there a second to hers and it's to discuss and review.
I seconded that.
Second? Oh, okay.
So I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by council member Cox. I'm gonna roll call vote. Uh, council member Cox?
Yes.
Council member Gomez?
No.
Council member Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia? Motion carries with council member Gomez voting no.
Did you have anything else to organize, uh, Ms. Gomez?
No, that was all.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Ramirez, do you have anything?
Yes, I would like to discuss the code enforcement of the question of the concerned resident who gave us an opinion or a remark about, um, having, I'm assuming there were, um, go carts or maybe motorcycles, um, using the terrain. I think that we need to know what the code enforcement is. And so I would like to have a presentation, uh, to be put on the agenda as an item regarding that particular incident so that we know what are the rights of the residents and what are the rights of, uh, the use of motorcycles on the desert so that both will get fair, a fair chance to, you know, to have a good, peaceful, loving neighborhood, okay? I don't know how to, so my motion is to have, uh, the code enforcement give a presentation on the basis of off, what do you call them? Off, uh, desert or...
Off-road vehicles.
Off-road. I, I, I don't know the terminology.
Yeah, they're off-road vehicles.
Roading? Up, up-road, is that it?
Yes.
Is that what it's called?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's off-road. Uh-huh, it's off-road. Okay.
So, is there a...
Bye.
Um, I'll second it. I'll second it.
Is there...
I think since the individual has brought it to the city council, I, certainly the manager should respond and maybe the council should know in case we get asked, but, uh, I think it's a good idea that there be a report at least, and I agree with, uh, council member Ramirez.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro...
First, we have a, a, a motion and a second.
Yes, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez, seconded by Mayor Garcia. I have a roll call vote. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Council member Gomez?
No. Um, you know what, Ms. Ramirez, you should add a date or else it's never gonna make it. I don't, I know you didn't add a date, so you might want to add a date there.
Council member Gomez?
I think she, I think she stated at the next meeting.
Oh, okay, yes.
Council member Jones?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Oh, okay, yes.
Anything else?
Uh, well, it's past ten o'clock. I don't know if I have time to, um, continue here, uh, Andre.
Yeah, the ten o'clock is usually to not discuss any new items. We have always in the past let you finish off, I guess, totally up to you, but let you finish off on council member comments, public comments, and agenda items. So the ten o'clock limitation is no new business. It's up to you, however.
I do have something that, uh, I do have something that, uh, should be agendized. Um, so at the last, uh, meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty, I elected to change the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, uh, as for chapter two, role of city council. Uh, I'm just saying, me myself, I know, uh, there were three votes. Page two, a paragraph B, three council members voted to delete that shall apply. In no event shall a council member serve as mayor for more than two consecutive years for his or her term of office unless additional service is granted by two-thirds affirmative vote of the entire council membership. I fully understand that it was not done with the Brown Act guidelines after I did some research and I did find that it was not properly done. I do want to rectify that motion and that vote. However, I'm not sure how I need to do it, uh, so I'll rely on our city attorney to guide me through it.
Certainly, if you wanted to reconsider that, it would be a motion to basically, uh, consider, I would say, consider revisions to chapter two, sorry, chapter two, section two, dealing with council election and governance and any other revisions that were done on the April seventh, that were voted on in connection with item twenty on the April seventh agenda.
And, and this is to be agendized so that we can actually have discussion and properly, uh, have discussion.
Yes.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, so the motion would be to basically reconsider the items that were voted on on item twenty on the April seventh meeting.
Okay, so that's my motion then.
I second it. Okay, I, I do have a motion by Mayor Garcia and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Ramirez. A roll call vote. Council member Cox?
Yes.
Council member Gomez?
Nay.
Council member Jones?
Aye.
Motion carries with council member Gomez voting no.
And I do want to state, uh, that if I make a mistake or I make an error or whichever or if I'm incorrect in any way, form, shape, or whatever, uh, I will be the first one to admit it. And after I did my research, I did find out that I was not, uh, that actually I was violating the Brown Act and I was not acting accordingly to, um, the way that we should have followed the direction. So I'm the first one to admit it. Uh, I don't have a problem with that. I never have, uh, so I'll be relieved and I think I feel better doing that and, um, I'll wait for the next meeting so we can actually discuss this. Uh, okay, so now we move on to, um, to reports, uh, of council members. Um, Mr. Cox, do you have anything to report?
Uh, no, I do not. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Jones?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, happy birthday to our mayor. I hope it was a wonderful and blessed day and I also now would like to...
Thank you, I'm still here.
You're still wearing stilettos. That's amazing. Um, and I do want to congratulate you for the agenda item you just requested. Not everyone can do what you just did and I'm very proud of you for doing that. Um, it, it, it's a good thing. Um, and I, I do, um, want, I, I've had a lot of calls and messages this past week from people wondering why our sister cities are able to hold their meetings in chambers, um, and, and we're not doing it. And I, I'm beginning to sense more and more frustration as time goes on with, um, this whole COVID pandemic. But I, you know, so the question is, when are we going to be able to resume holding our meetings in, in, in chambers? And I think it's, you know, it's something that we really should be giving some thought to. I think our meetings will go better. It gets, I think we've done amazingly well, given that we're all teleconferencing from different locations, but, um, I think it, um, the sentiment pretty much is out there that it just helps people to be able to see their council in action. So, um, I hope that that happens sooner than later and certainly we can take whatever necessary precautions we would need to make sure that we're all, um, safe and, and, um, making sure that we're, um, following the guidelines. But I, I certainly hope that day comes sooner than later for the benefit of our residents. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Gomez?
Yes, um, I've been told that we're not streaming in real time so people aren't able to hear or watch. And that's what I was just told today. So I don't know if we are streaming in real time through audio or video. I presume no, because a couple of people said they couldn't hear or see anything. Another thing is, um, I was also told that whoever has a Metro phone, they're not able to dial in. So the phone number that's provided by the city to include to our public participation does not work if the phone is with Metro. This is one of the comments that I received as well. Certainly you want to test that theory, but this is what I'm being told, um, at the moment. Another thing that I'd like to also state... Another thing that I'd like to also state, and this is, I speak also, there's things that I would always do, so blanket statements to say that there are things that no one could do. To me, it's self-contained, prospectival, worldly views within the mindset of self, so I don't speak for anyone or anyone's behalf, but on my own. I believe that there were no unlawful votes that were made at any moment, at any time that happened in any moment. We are not, if anything of that nature were, I think it's called intimidation and fear. This is what we have a lot, it's called a type of bullying, if you haven't noticed it. If that were the case, just like when I was antagonized many, many years by many of my council members, and also the administration, the executive team to speak, we should have sent it to the grand jury. We should have called Attorney General Javier Becerra. Everything works two ways, it's a double-edged sword. So there is a couple of comments also that were being stated publicly that I'd like to address. There were definitely no grounds that have, were already addressed by the policy handbook. The commenters had basically no say, they were really talking out of their ass, and yes, as a public figure and an individual, I also use cuss words. That's to humanize me, whether I'm at the dais or not at the dais, and I want to make sure that our audience realizes that public servants also have language that may disintegrate or may not disintegrate, because we'll have different perspective ways of speaking to one another, whether it's proper or improper, and what our ways of discussing things are. So they, that Ms. Gomez used the word "ass," because she did. Another thing is, through deliberation and proper noticing, was definitely justified, and it was held within the confines of state...
Your time is up.
So these individuals that are, oh, thank you.
Okay, based on what Ms. Jones has stated, and Jim, as far as our meeting, all I want to say is that I do need to speak with our city manager and our city clerk, and see if we can actually go back to having our meetings at City Hall, even if we don't allow the public to attend. This is much too difficult. I don't know if, maybe you can answer this, Madam Clerk, are you at City Hall during the meeting?
Yes.
So why is the council not there?
Madam Mayor and members of the council, it's our view that the public health order is what's governing the gathering of the council in the chambers. And, in fact, I can send you and the rest of the council a memorandum in the morning that not only shares the public health order, but also what the definition is of public gathering. And it's our view as staff that that would constitute a public gathering. Why we're here, and probably the reason that explains why we're here as city employees, is because there's been specific provisions in that public order that cites back to, I think, the definition of essential workers, and we, as city employees, because we're responsible for infrastructure systems, as an example, to maintain and provide basic public health and safety responsibilities, we're still required to work. We have made accommodations for those, given the pandemic, to be able to work from home. But it's our view at this point that, and we'll research it further, and I would certainly look forward to talking with you more about it, but it's our immediate view that doing so would violate the public gathering provisions of the public health order.
Well, I don't expect for you to give me a complete answer tonight. I just thought I raised your question, only because it is so difficult for us to hold the meetings this way, you know? And so this way, you know, you can think about it, we can talk about it, and maybe we can come to a conclusion and make it easier for the council to hold these meetings, so that we don't feel, you know, that we're not able to perform as well as we should, because we're not at the proper surrounding.
Yeah, and I, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
I don't agree. So a question of medical health. Not a question of business. Kaiser has taken the stand that if you are over sixty-five, you are not to leave your home. Therefore, if we were to do that, we may not have coverage, medical coverage. So you need to reconsider what you've just said. The question of being seen is not what's important. Saving one's life or avoiding ill health is another. Consider the fact of a mayor pretend of a delanto. That's the best example that I can give you. Who was in attendance at a city council meeting? Hmm? And he made the paper then was critical. So therefore, this idea that the public doesn't see us is not important if it means a question of life versus your death. This is a medical question. This is not a question of being seen or a question of not being seen. I agree with the city manager, totally, totally. I cannot agree at all with the rest of you that feel that because we're not seen, we're not doing their job. I'm sorry, if that's the attitude you get, the public may have of us.
Rita, Rita, that's not, that was not what I said. I could care less if I'm seen or not. I'm just talking about the...
I know, I know what you said. I'm just taking it a little further, so that you understand how I perceive it. I understood you, okay? The consideration. But I'm just saying, it's a question of medicine and your mental, and your, and your health. This is not a question of attendance. This is a question of life. And if you haven't had it or been around it, you have, you are very blessed. You are very blessed.
Great Lord, yes, I am.
But I also wish you, because nobody's called my name yet, I wish you a happy birthday and many more. Take care and God bless.
Oh, and thank you for the beautiful flowers. I sent you a picture. I hope you received it.
Oh, I know. They were real. Okay, I believe that's all that we have before this council tonight. It's almost ten thirty, I'm sorry we were this long, but nevertheless, God bless each and every one of you, and this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.